Depending on how hard it is, basically they're doing the video for us. We do it with fitting in the bar. Is this what you think? We'd have had to have everybody put their hands up at one time.
Oh. Yep. Absolutely. I'm not sure. At least if the first part should be fresh. I don't know.
Uh, I'm counting north and then the other way. Right. Probably. Right north.
See, I thought about. He was just gonna get it from the right. Yeah. I should see. So a lot of things.
And I just don't see why. I had to. The, um, this part.
John, do you got that? You got, you got me that?
Are you gonna find this?
That's what. Yeah. 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 Oh, good shot.
Last minute say, you know. No, I couldn't catch it. Can I walk around?
How do you bring it when it's time? Wow. It's a beautiful fuck.
No, I don't.
It's so close. Yeah. I'll give you this.
Good morning, it's nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order.
Thacker.
Here.
Delozer.
Here.
Halem.
Here.
Commissioners, we have a call.
Mr. Delozer, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Halem, would you leave us some prayer?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the men and women that serve our nation. Father God, we just ask for a blessing on them today, Father, as they protect and serve God and protect this great, great state and this United States of America. Father, we just thank you for their commitment, Father, for their willingness, Father, to do it without being drafted, Father, volunteer to protect a nation that stands for freedom. We thank you for that, for what's in Christ and we pray. Amen.
Item number five, approve disproved minutes from August the 5th, 2013, regular meeting and August the 7th, special meeting. Is there a motion? Second.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number six, new business, consideration of possible action with respect to any other matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the posting of the agenda.
I've got one. It's a, it's a REIT grant application from Sequoia Public Schools. Came in on Friday. Um, it's, and the deadline is, I think it's tomorrow. So it had to be in this meeting is the reason that it's on here. Mr. Isti, does this constitute new business?
Uh, from what you advised me a few minutes prior to the meeting started, it was a matter that you could not anticipate, you did not know when it was coming in. In addition to that, the deadline for return is, is before we could have our next meeting. So by definition, all of that.
Okay, well, I've got this application for Sequoia Public Schools for a REIT grant to renew some, I mean redo some of the drainage along the county road. I make a motion to approve.
One second.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number six, new business, consideration of possible action with respect to any other matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the post-meeting of the agenda.
I've got one. It's a, it's a REIT grant application from Sequoia Public Schools. Came in on Friday. Um, it's, and the deadline is, I think it's tomorrow. So it had to be in this meeting is the reason that it's on here. Mr. Isti, does this constitute new business?
Uh, from what you advised me a few minutes prior to the meeting started, it was a matter that you could not anticipate, you did not know when it was coming in. In addition to that, the deadline for return is, is before we could have our next meeting. So by definition, all of that.
Okay, well, I've got this application for Sequoia Public Schools for a REIT grant to renew some, I mean redo some of the drainage along the county road. I make a motion to approve.
One second.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Is there any other new business? Item number seven, announcements. Do we have any announcements, gentlemen? Okay. Item number eight, unfinished business, discussion of possible action on the feasibility of the healthy survival of the two existing large trees located next to the old courthouse during demolition and preparation of the site for parking and/or other plans for that area. Mr. Isti.
Commissioner, this again is something that was requested by the commissioners to look into the possibility. The OSU Extension Office was asked to participate and do a, an open survey on that. They presented the document, the review for your review and decision.
Have you gentlemen reviewed that? Questions, comments? Discussion?
There was no, John wasn't able to supply us with a fee of what it would take to do the, the example which he stated in the packet. So, you know, for the, for the overall, with the way he stated it and the way he drew it out, there's an extreme cost in that. That we'd have to talk to somebody that takes out trees and see what it would take to, how much we're really talking about protecting. And that's the only piece that's not.
Right. Mr. Delozer?
I agree. But it's not, there's nothing stated, the cost that we saw in anyway.
Do you want further discussion? Do you want to?
What is it, gonna delay opening the bids? I mean, this is something we're gonna have to, I don't know, where's BJ? BJ, is he gonna, is he gonna? Can you come on in?
Sure.
Just all the way.
All the way.
Instead of talking to you about it. Is it gonna, with, with us taking more time to look at these, what it would cost to design it, sculpting designs, go to work, plus the fees involved and to, what the cost is, is it gonna, is it gonna delay us in looking at the bids? Or would that be another cost that they would have to take on the people that's gonna do to take down the courthouse?
Uh, I would say it would not delay opening the bids. You can open the bids with the tree protection in or not in that project. And, and really, if you would like to add that, then you pretty much have up until the time that demo company starts. And then if you choose to protect them, then you can issue them some sort of a change directive so they can price that protection out for you.
So it's a place where we can add to the bid once we open the bids.
Yeah. Now, I'd like to see a cost on it. So do you, do you wanna do that? Joan will.
Is there any? Is there any, what would it take to get a cost? Would y'all be able to give us a cost on that?
No, we really can't assess a cost because that's not in our, our realm of duty necessarily. Um, we can provide the information on how to best save the trees and, and help advise the company who would be doing that work. I mean, it's gonna completely depend. I mean, some of that may require a retaining wall. I don't know that, I mean, we can't really do the cost of that and what, you know, their change of process to keep from going over the roots. We can't put a value to that. That's gonna be something that's in, someone who's in that business would need to do.
Commissioner.
Sir. Uh, also in the, in the packet that was provided from OSU, it also addresses if the trees were retained, the, the requirements for lands that would have to be built into the landscape. We need Kim Reeve, the architect involved as well.
We would. Cause it would completely changes the design of the, of the plaza. Well, not completely, but it changes the design of that.
And I, I, I did not contact him, just, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, are we talking about one tree or two trees?
Depends what you ask. The original was, the original scope was one tree.
I see that the state, OSU.
We were asked, we were asked to do the scope for the two trees.
You guys won't believe the trees, you're gonna take them out. It's pretty simple.
I'm suggesting, if I can speak.
I guess.
Something that's a lot of times used in the bidding process, put in an alternative bid item. And then that way the contractor will bid that option.
Right.
And then you make a determination at that point, whether you wanna do it or not.
Yeah, that's kinda what BJ was talking about. We can, we can do a bid all one or two.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see with, through the architect, and they're not here, but I'd like to see what, what amount of parking spaces we would lose also by, by leaving the tree or the two trees, whichever way we would wanna do it. I'd like to see on the, on the plans that they have, what, what it would cause in parking spaces. Cause parking is dear around here, as everyone knows. So we'd have to find out for sure what that would do.
Can we, would we like to ask Mr. Fay to work on that? Aren't you working, BJ, aren't you working on the demolition bid?
Yeah, if, if you so wish, we can put in an ad alternate in the bid package for the tree protection.
Make a motion that we have the chairman, get BJ and also our arbiters to look at this and also the architect.
I'll second that motion.
One week.
One week.
One week. Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and tabled for one week.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two, discussion of possible action regarding the follow-up of V-911 addressing establishment of accounts. Commissioner Halem.
I had the board ask me to look at this, so I did. And we had a, we had a temporary meeting, Ms. Hamilton wasn't able to attend, so what we did, we went ahead and looked at all the, the funds that come into addressing, not 911, but just addressing. Now, previously the board has given 141, 142, and what's the other one, Jim?
43.
43, thank you. To 911 dispatch. Then it left, one point Shelley. Shelley?
Yes.
There you go. Shelley, come on up. Scott, come on up. And Janet, come on, everybody. Uh, at one point we had, we gave, we gave all those accounts to Janet. Then, then we had Shelley over there. Then we moved Shelley, who came over here under Scott. And then Scott was responsible for Shelley. And Shelley was doing your stuff out of what account?
Out.
Scott's account.
Scott's.
Scott's account. Now, addressing starts with Shelley. And it's driven by a new, a new house, a new commercial business or subdivisions, subdivisions we put in. She's addressing so it can go on the grid, which is the 911 grid that would help dispatching. That helps dispatching so that dispatching, the assessor, the treasurer, even our department, everybody's impacted by, the sheriff's office is impacted by what Shelley does. So the addressing comes first and then it supplies all these other entities, which we gave all to Ms. Janet. Ms. Janet in her, in her meeting last week in the meeting said she was willing to give 20%. What we're really trying to do is budget a cash fee account. Now, I didn't make a decision on that. I wanted to bring it to y'all so that we could all discuss this. But a cash fee account is not a budget account. We don't budget that account at all. And we, in discovering, and this will be a while, so, in discovering about the addressing, Scott, Director Stokes, also has his budget in. So it's 25 from him, 25 from Janet to establish address. What's addressing is a, you know, you have, anytime the business is good, like we heard from Mr. Curtis last week, 7.9 million in July, you're gonna have some money. There are some lean years in there, I mean, some lean times in there. Is Theresa Jackson here? Theresa, do you have that list of what we deposited in that account for six months? So the board can see it. So there's some times that we have lean months and there's some time, there's some, some good months. But it's all driven by construction or housing or commercial or subdivisions. And then, of course, helps planning, where they start it. So Scotty came up with the piece of what he gets for his account. And he checked with Steve, what's his name?
Oh, Palladino with the.
Steve Palladino. The grant money that we've been for years using on, on his account or his emergency management is not money that we can use for salaries. It has been used that way for years. And he checked with Palladino, Palladino told him no, that isn't used for salaries. So we have to do his account for salaries. He can take the 20, $26,000.
Yes.
Somewhere in the.
Yeah, exactly, each year, it varies.
Now, to take it and put it on his MNO, which the MNO is that Everbridge, which was $27,000, right?
Yeah, so we didn't take it out of the grant account.
Right. But we can take it out of that account to pay. So we really need, we've got two things going on. We've got Shelley's account, we've got Janet's account, we've got Scotty's account to look at. But in the, in the meantime, Scotty has, Scotty has his money set aside on the, what he's granted from us by the state to him as emergency management. So his account, you have your, your paperwork. Can you give those a copy? Did you bring a copy so you can give to the board?
I did not bring a copy for everybody.
Okay, so you can get a copy, can't you?
Yes, okay.
Can you go? So what he has, he has his account, which is him, emergency management, which we budget for. That comes out, out of the general fund tax dollars that are collected. Shelley, on the other hand, is doing addressing. But in addressing, we have given 142, which is the hard lines. The hard lines are the lines that actually come into your house at the telephone, not your cell phone number. That is totally, totally different money. Cell phone is, is another account, 141. But under 142 is the hard lines that come into your home. And that, where you have a little telephone there at your house, if you still have telephones. And so she gets money off of that account for addressing. And it's a cash fee account, which the board was trying to budget for a cash fee account. I didn't know how to do it since we don't budget for cash fee accounts. Now, if we're going to start, you know, that makes, I don't think the clerk and sheriff and the treasurer would budget very much because, you know, those accounts aren't budgeted. And so with her account, it's, it all starts with her in her addressing. So she's really the coordinator for addressing. And under cash fee account, we need to fund her department, fund her office for salary and also for her MNO.
And travel.
And, and, that's right, and travel. The other part of that is, she's also operating with a 1997 Chevrolet Impala, which since John's here, I wanna ask John, we're looking to visit with him about updating that model so she can use something else besides that. But this is, this is where we're at on, on the budgeting for that. Now, the cash fee account, as you can see, has about 63,000.
Maybe 42?
Huh? 142.
80,981, oh, as of June 30th.
Okay, it has 80,000. But it's a cash fee account that we're trying to operate as a budgeting account. Unless we start budgeting cash fee accounts, it's, it goes back to her addressing, which brings us to the place that with 911, Ms. Janet's accounts, that is the way in which we pay dispatchers.
On the 42 account, the only salary that we're paying is the Shelley, is for Shelley. And then we have MNO.
Okay, and so all we have to do is we'll put Shelley out and then identify those dollars to Shelley that goes to Shelley for her pay and then her MNO and travel off that account. The remainder of the count stays there to pay the dispatchers. Now, under the dispatchers, we are paying dispatcher salaries, but their benefits are coming out of the general fund. So all of it, when we say it costs, we've been dealing with a number of 348,000, that is not truly the total of what it costs for the dispatching people. So then with this coming on, is that anything that takes away from Ms. Janet's is a, is another feat, another cost to us on establishing dispatching. So it's really clouded, but the thing was, was is to do exactly what Ms. Janet just spoke about, was taking Shelley's salary out of that, creating, the creation of this fee account is for, for it to be under the board. And the board could give money to the 911 director for the pay of whatever it takes to dispatch or whatever you need, whatever the needs are for dispatching. But that implies for us, this one, if we're looking in this, what's on down here, when we're looking at dispatching for 911 and to do a lease program with the employees or to look at anything else with the employees that are over in dispatching, you're gonna have to take from 142. Which, taking from 142 is really addressing, but it impacts, it impacts so many other offices, but it has to start with addressing. Scotty, sorry, Mr. Stokes is on the other side of it.
You're fine.
His is fine, where he's at, his emergency management, we, you know, and his budget is, salary is 43,000 plus, plus FICA on that. And then he has MNO. Well, he's getting 20,000 to 25,000 from the state for his MNO, which takes care of the, Everbridge, what is it called?
Yeah, Everbridge.
Everbridge, which is the dispatching out or the calls that go out to the entire county to let them know that there's an emergency, right?
Yeah, that amount is, I mean, the amount for the notification system's a little bit more than what I get from the state, but.
Yeah.
I mean, that isn't what, it's so iffy as to what you can spend that money on from the state. I mean, or 25% has to go to this and a certain percentage has to go to that. So I don't know if we could actually say that all.
I'm just.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know you're just.
I'm trying to just. And so then he has MNO on top of that, which is his MNO, his computers and printers and software, and then also his travel. And then, once we take care of that, that could be budgeted, I would imagine. What the problem is, or the area of discussion was what to do with Shelley's office, which is the addressing. And she's the addressing coordinator and coordinator for addressing, however we wanna make it. But it all begins with her that feeds all these other systems. So her decision is, from my thought, is if it's a cash fee account, how do we budget for it? What we need to do is just make it a cash fee account under the board. And the board has Shelley as, as an employee already, because that was done years ago and the board hired her. So she's there as an employee, then we would pay her under the cash fee account, pay her, and then we also would pay her MNO. Because right now, Scott, Director Stokes and her are sharing out of his funds. Is that right?
Yes.
But we still need to say, we need to set that money back, set it over to the side so at the same time, Ms. Hamilton can use that money in paying for her dispatchers and their salaries.
Okay, so the 25,000's the only grant money you've got. The rest of it comes out of the general fund. Your budget comes solely out of the general fund, except for this 25,000, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and those are actually separate accounts. They're, it has to stay separate.
Right.
You know, to.
I thought so, but I mean, everything else you get comes out of the general fund.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. Halem, would, would you like to bring back a proposal on how that money is wrote down so that we can all look at it?
If you guys, you know, we, we didn't go too far because really it was a real iffy that if, if you're in agreement that this is a cash fund and that's what we need to operate, then yes, Theresa Jackson and I can work on that and get Mr. Stokes and also Janet together as department heads to let them know the impact that it would have on them. But it could stay out there as a cash fee account instead of a budget account.
You, you would do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Janet, you haven't been paying Shelley solely out of this account anyway.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna bring it finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Commissioner Halem will head that up and bring us back a proposal next week. Can you do it in a week?
Mm-hmm.
That he'll bring us a proposal that we can look at and know exactly what, what we're doing with those funds.
That's a motion.
That's the motion.
Second.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Hi. I'm glad you're clear, clarity, we're operating this as a cash.
Well, I mean, whatever the proposal, you bring that back in the room.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Motion's been carried, bring back next week.
Uh, thanks, Shannon, thanks, Chris.
Item number nine, public hearing with discussion of possible action on. Go ahead. Request for zoning change from AR to C5 highway commercial district for the construction of a restaurant and bar. This is located in District 3. The Planning Commission was a, gave a tie vote of three to three. According to the City of Plummer Rogers County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Ordinance, Section 2005A3, in the event that the Planning Commission comes to a tie vote, it is taken to the Board of County Commissioners within a 15-day period for resolve. This is a property located between, right on the border between Rogers County and Wyner County, close to 412 and 4140 Road. This is the present zoning for the property, it's zoned AR. Commercial is adjacent along with residential district as well. Section 600 of the City of Plummer Rogers County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Ordinance states that for the purpose of the C5 Highway Commercial District is designed primarily to encourage and develop recognizable attractive groups of facilities to serve truckers as well as persons traveling by automobile and to provide certain. Well, I mean, whatever the proposal, will you bring that back in a little?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Motion's being carried to bring back next week.
Uh, thanks, Shelley. Thanks, Janet, thanks, Teresa.
I have number nine, public hearing with discussion and possible action over here. You already voted. Request for zoning change from AR to C5. That the intended use of the property after rezoning is for restaurant and bar. The applicant, Bill McAnally, current zoning is AR. Legal description is reflected in your agenda. Before we get into that, couple of council keeping items. Okay, I assume that's why the majority of the people who are in the room is for this particular item. When we have a zoning issue, I'm gonna remind you, this is a Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is not a planning commission meeting. There, everyone will speak in order, they will have ample time. If it is out of order, you will be removed. You will refrain from personal attacks against each other, the applicant, his attorneys, if he has one, and the Board of County Commissioners. Those are not suggestions, those are not guidelines, and there are no exceptions. Okay, is the Director Curtis?
Actually, just a moment, Commissioner, technical issues.
Jim, are you charging us right now?
No.
Okay, got it. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This came before the Planning Commission last week, on August the 6th. This is a zoning request from Bill McAnally. Request for zoning change from AR to C5 Highway Commercial District, for the construction of a restaurant and bar. This is located in District 3. The Planning Commission was, gave a tie vote of 3 to 3. According to the City of Claremore Rogers County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Ordinance, Section 2005A3, in the event that the Planning Commission comes to a tie vote, it is taken to the Board of County Commissioners within a 15-day period for resolve. This is a property located between, right on the border between Rogers County and Wagner County, close to 412 and 4140 Road. This is the present zoning for the property, it's zoned AR. Commercial is adjacent, along with residential district as well. Section 600 of the City of Claremore Rogers County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Ordinance states that, for the purpose of the C5 Highway Commercial District, is designed primarily to encourage and develop recognizable, attractive groups of facilities to serve truckers, as well as persons traveling by automobile, and to provide certain amusement facilities serving the metropolitan area. It is ordinarily located along US number highways, and particularly along interstate highways. The comprehensive plan for this district is District 9 High Intensity Special District Corridor. The comprehensive plan states that, a conference approach to development of parcels from the highway should be considered to limit the number of access points. The Oklahoma Department of Transportation should be consulted to determine the standards of access from the highway, and potential additional interchanges parcel should, but, and be accessed off frontage roads. This is accessible off a frontage road. In fact, is my understanding that the Oklahoma Department of Transportation's come in and already provided the taking, and it will be putting out a clover leaf at some time in the future for this area. Retail, commercial, and service should be considered as existing access points. Development of this location should be subject to traffic analysis to determine the safety impacts of additional vehicles entering and exiting the highway. Sinage, landscaping, parking, and visible building materials and orientation to the highway should be reviewed for visual impacts to the travel corridor. Residential issues should be considered in the vicinity of existing access points. Outdoor stores should be screened from the highway. Development of these locations should be subject to traffic analysis to determine the safety impacts of additional vehicles entering and exiting the highway. Existing residential development should be respected. Manufacturing industrial uses should be allowed in the corridor in areas adjacent to existing industrial development, signage, landscaping, parking, and visible building materials. I did contact the Wagner County, active planning commission meeting, I should say. I did contact my counterpart in Wagner County, their planning commission director, to ask what their comprehensive plan and their zoning type is on their side of the border. They did not get back with me with any information. In fact, when asking the question, the director stated that she had, the comprehensive plan was way out of date and would not be usable in this analysis. But, again, without any definitive information, I cannot provide any of that to the board. This is from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. This is the traffic count for this area. This 9,200 is for Highway 412. This is 4140 Road right here, with a traffic count of 525. On the Wagner County side, what is known as South 305 or Coeida Road, has a traffic count of 502. Admiral has a traffic count of 533, which is located about 2.5 miles due west of the location of this access, or this project.
How current are those numbers?
2011. A concern came for the Planning Commission was, that C5 is our highest intensity level of commercial development, and as such, is a zoning type used for adult-oriented businesses. Citizens that were concerned, and there were about 20-plus that showed up to the meeting for this specific item, there were additional members there for other items. The concern was that sexual-oriented businesses could go into this area. Well, the ordinance, Section 603C2E of the ordinance, states clearly that if there is residential development within 1,000 feet of this, specifically on Rogers County side, then a sexual-oriented business could not go into that location. And as such, right here, the zone RT, which is residential development for mobile home parks, and as such, it is a residentially zoned district, and therefore, such an activity cannot be placed in this location. I'm definitely not saying that the applicant is applying for that, he is not at all at this time, but it was concerned that further down the road, that because zoning stays with the property, that it could be a potential for that issue.
Okay. Anything further?
Not at this time.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, he's present, I'm with him, Commissioner.
Okay, if you would come up, who's going to do the speaking for this item?
I can, or Mr. McAnally can either.
Or a combination of both, and who should start? Mr. Higgins, if you would, for the record, your name and address, business address, please.
My name's Bill Higgins. My business address is Post Office Box 1267 Claremore, Oklahoma.
Okay.
I represent Mr. McAnally, and as the director indicated, Mr. McAnally has requested a change in zoning from AR to C5. He is wanting to put in a restaurant and bar on property that he's owned for many years. It was taken by ODOT in a condemnation proceeding. His residence was torn down, it's bare ground now, on the top of the hill. He's provided me with a, I only have two elevations of the establishment he wants to put in, if anybody's interested in looking at that.
Aye.
The elevation's on the second page.
Mr. Higgins, this is showing a second floor.
There's a second floor planned, and that is for, the business concept was that that would be for the manager to live in.
Commissioner?
In this zoning type, that would not be a permissible use. During the planning commission meeting, Mr. McAnally did indicate that that would be something he'd be willing to point out.
He's indicated the same to me, Commissioner. That if that is, if it doesn't fit in with the planning regulations, that he'd be more than happy to just make that more eating space.
Under the ordinance, in structures like a mini-source facility, or something along those lines, specifically for the storage of items, the ordinance does allow for a residence space to be placed above the office space, but that's for, that's where use gonna, not this area.
Okay, but you said he's indicated.
Jim, would you wanna address the official there?
Yes, as we found out, our architect wasn't sure about that on the zoning of it. We have an option of just taking that second floor completely off, is what we're looking forward to do.
Okay, so this elevation would be either a second floor for eating space, or it will be deleted from the, okay.
Taken out, yes.
And do you have anything further on concerns, issues?
Well, I think this was developed with C5 in mind. I think it fits perfectly with C5. I think it also fits perfectly with the comprehensive plan. I think it'd be a very good use of the land, and best use of that property out there.
Okay, thank you. Do you need these back, Mr. Higgins, I'm sorry?
I can keep those.
Oh, I'd like to enter one for the record.
Fine.
Okay, are there any opposed? Okay?
You want to start?
The way this works, ma'am, the way this works, is you address all of your comments to the board. Not to each other, not to the applicant or his attorney. So, who would like to go first? Okay, if you would come up, state your name and your address, and what county you live in.
My name is Vicki Cook. I live at 15525 East Anderson Drive, I know Oklahoma. And I am a resident of Rogers County. And also, I am a landowner directly south of Mr. McAnally in Wagner County. I'm born and raised there. First of all, I want to note that I support growth and progress in both counties, but only if it will benefit the community in the surrounding area. I live across the road in Iola from Parfam, and see it as an excellent tax revenue and job growth for the community and the county. I also expect it to remain an asset due to its previous success in another location. However, I do not believe the location, the request of rezoning for a restaurant and bar is an asset in this residential area adjacent to Wagner County. Other than the port operations, there is only one business within a mile radius. When we visited with the owner, he stated that his business would not be there much longer. It would probably be ending with him. My family spoke with the president of Johnson's 33, Steve Taylor, and he made it clear that he had no problems with a restaurant going in, but he would not be in support of a bar. Last Tuesday, several concerned citizens attended to protest the proposal. We've already discussed extreme traffic problems, numerous wrecks, and drug-related situations concerning this small area. More important than county progress is the concern in well-being of the people living within that area. Most of the residents have been there most of their lives. Having said short notice of the meeting, many residents could not attend, but wanted their opinion expressed. Having one basically short day, my sister and I contacted people within a one-mile radius of the area. Imagine the contacts we could've made if we had the 15 days to contact people. I was a schoolteacher for 27 years, and I know, I have many longtime friends, and a number of churches in the area. And I think I could've probably gathered hundreds of signatures on that proposal. So, we just did what we could do. This is the original copy.
Thank you.
These are households we contacted in Rogers County. That was 33. You'll notice some people signed, husband and wife together, others signed individually. We just kinda glanced through those. The first voters we approached were Mr. McAnally's immediate neighbors. Only one was aware of the proposal. They were, they are so, they're indicated with double stars. Two of his neighbors were not home, so we could not get any information. The single star represents homeowners south of 412 and west of Coeida Road. The remaining names are people throughout Rogers County who oppose. Voters from Iola, Villagod, Talala, Owasso, and Claremore. Everyone we spoke with was against the proposal, but we gave them the option on the paper to be in favor of. Again, imagine what could've been accomplished if we'd had more time to read names. Only one person, the business owner up the road, refused to sign either way due to conflict of interest with Mr. McAnally. I want to point out that this business does not serve alcohol, and closes at a respectable time, and there are no traffic issues associated with it. The next thing we did was, was go to the Wagner County side. The maps did not indicate when shown where the bar would be placed, that there were very many people surrounding, but there are. We made 21 contacts to households within a mile radius, and eight did not, approximately eight, didn't answer their door, so we could not get a response. But everyone we contacted opposed, or was against the proposal. Okay, we hope that you will take into consideration the concerns of Rogers County voters and Wagner residents. We cannot see the restaurant and bar bringing any asset to this residential area for a large tax gain for the county. Hopefully, you will respect the voters, and not allow rezoning to take place.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Were you finished? Okay. You know, I always wanted to do this. I thought when I graduated high school, I didn't have to listen to you lecture anymore. So, you need to sit down. And who do we have next?
My name is Cheryl Adams. I live out there at 29708 East Admiral Place. I live in Wagner County, but within a half-mile where this bar will go into. Aesthetically, I'm gonna look at it as to, the Planning Commissioner did a great job. He took a lot of our comments that we had last week, and he brought them up, and he gave us answers that we weren't sure, because it was such a vast turnover for us to know. That road down there, because of the rezoning, where they took the land, what ODOT did with the clover leaf that's gonna be there, it literally took out multiple homes and land in that area for that four-leaf clover. What it did was it rerouted Admiral. Admiral is no longer a straight shot. Used to be on Highway 33. It goes down, and within a quarter of a mile of 305, it does a little horse leg around, and stops at stop sign right there. That stop sign, now I have checked this morning, and I have been in touch with the school. Unfortunately, it's a bus stop, and that has nothing to do with the way that we zone our land out there. But that stop sign, kids catch the bus there that morning, and they get off that morning. That morning, 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I know that the restaurant won't be open at 7:30 in the morning, but it will be open at 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon where they come in. We've estimated about three kids right now that we know of for sure that catch the bus right there. But because of that little dog leg, where the dog leg comes out, that driveway goes right into that house right there. So, the road that would be turning into this establishment is probably 50 feet straight to the north. And it makes a little dog leg around. Aesthetically, when we're looking at that, and the way that the Planning Commission came in, the access to that road is difficult. We were told in the Planning Commission that this restaurant and bar would be to help Port 33 with somewhere for those truckers to eat. When asked, Mr. McAnally had made the comment that, well, rightfully so, we can't get truckers in there, because truckers, there's not enough room for a trucker to be able to park. So, I'm gonna look at it aesthetically, that it's not feasible to put in, zone it for a C5, to put in a bar and restaurant, because there's not room for parking. If he's trying to do truck traffic, you're right there on Highway 412, it's already accident-prone. That's the reason why ODOT and INCOC are looking at putting in the four-leaf clover right there. Basically, I know you have to look at it that way, future progress of what's gonna go in there. There are houses on the other side. There's not much else that can go in there, other than just something small. But we would prefer to leave it agriculture, because of seven miles up the road, we can name about 10 restaurants for you real easy. Not that hard to get on 412 and head on up to Caduca. Aesthetically, that's what we're gonna look at, is if the parking is unavailable out there. The entrance into where the restaurant bar is, is just, it's very difficult to get into. Even though it's a two-lane road, if you're a car turning on, because of the way that it zigzags around on that Z, it's gonna be a one-car lane at a time.
Okay, thank you. Are there others opposed? Yes, sir, if you would come up to the front.
My name's Jesse Gibbs. I've lived out there for 55 years. I live at 330 East Avenue. Approximately 900 feet, 1,000 feet from the proposed site, right on Admiral. I live in Wagner County. I have grandchildren staying with me now. I have a small building out there at the road, which will be facing this restaurant and bar, where they catch school buses. We also have another child that gets off there and waits for their ride. So, we're gonna have kids getting on and off school buses right next to it, and just right down the road. This jog, which was mentioned, there's been several accidents involving alcohol. I know that what people consider 3-2 beer is a non-toxicating drink, but we arrest a bunch of them all the time for drinking. I have no problem with the restaurant going in there, not eating any of his cooking, but nothing wrong with the restaurant. I'm definitely opposed to the bar. I also have concerns that there's only one acre there. You've got seating system, parking, it's really, in my opinion, way too small for his proposal. And there is no place for trucks to park. I'm concerned that they're gonna be stopping on the shoulder of 305 there, if they wanna, you know, have something to eat. And it's just not a good spot. And that's basically all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there others?
I have something.
I have something. My name's Anita Morris, and I live at 229 South 350th East Avenue, on the Wagner side. I just got this letter from a neighbor who lived in Sherrill, so I'll just read it to you guys, from one of the neighbors that her children do get off. And I've got copies of that for you. It just says, "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in regards to the hearing of a restaurant and bar area being built in Rogers County that is located at 305th and Admiral. I have a son that goes to high school and is dropped off at this stop sign at Admiral and 305th. I do not want him having to worry about drivers leaving the place of business that will be built on this property. I feel that it is not 400 feet from where his drop-off is, which we know that means a school, and we don't know the criteria for children and buses. But she was aware of the 300 or 400 feet. I also know that there are four other children that are dropped off at this location. One is my niece, and she states her name. She is only in middle school. If only a restaurant was going in place, I would not worry so much. But knowing that a restaurant with a bar would not be a good choice. Too many people will be drinking and driving at all hours of operation. I do not want to have to worry about break-ins or wrecks that will be happening. Please do not allow this to be done. This is not in the well-being of the area residents." And she signed it, so. Excuse me. There's the original one, and then the ink was left. And here's another extra one if someone wants it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there others?
My name is Gregory Wes Patrick Senior. And I live at 10755 East 590 Road. I have two elderly people next door to me that are 82 and 88 years old, and a single lady on the other side of me. And they're all in Rogers County. And I'm speaking for all of us that two blocks from them, bar or restaurant, last night, they had a bar fight at somewhere else. Why is it because of a bar fight, they extended out to the neighborhood? And this second is the traffic that goes through there. No one does a speed limit there. They don't follow the speed limit signs. They don't follow the brake signs from the trucks. And we have had two... Yesterday, there was two motorcycles racing down Admiral or 590 Road, whichever side you live on. But a bar would be unfeasible for this area because of elderly people being scared that they're going to get broken. And I am disabled myself. I can hardly defend myself, and I feel like this would be a bad choice.
Thank you, sir. Do we have others that would like the opportunity to speak? Anyone else? I want to give everyone ample time to... Okay, Mr. Higgins?
Can I respond just to somebody?
Yes, if you would.
Seems to me that the characterization of the business idea is this is going to be a bar. This is going to be a restaurant that serves beer, drinks, whatever. If you go to Tulsa, a lot of the places in Claremore, places in Owasso, even one of those restaurants, and they are restaurants and bars, and that's exactly what we're going to do. They've expressed some concerns about the traffic in the area. The traffic's going to be taken care of by either ODOT or by the planning commission. They're going to do access, but tell us how to get in and how to get out. The fact that there's a bar fight somewhere else and it spills out in the street has nothing to do with this. It's speculation. These are fears that these people have. I'm sure that they're well-meaning in their presence here today, and they're speaking to you all. But we think that they're just worried about what may be, what is going to be. Mr. McAnally wants to spend a significant amount of money here in Rogers County to bring sales tax to the county. It will be of benefit to the county. One of the presenters talked about the fact that there's only one other business in the area. The comprehensive growth is to encourage growth in these areas, and that's what this can be. It can be a base to start on. For me, I don't want to drive seven miles to go to somewhere. If I can drive half a mile, I mean, I think probably four miles from Inola. Inola has restaurants, but probably could do some more. The main thing that my client wants the commissioners to know is that this is not a bar. It's a restaurant that's going to have good food. I've looked at the menu. The menu looks great, and they're going to serve out. And so we think that we would respectfully ask that you consider zoning changes, that Mr. McAnally be the minister of this project. Thank you.
Anyone have a response to that? Like I said, I want to give you ample time to...
I'd like to respond to it. We do have concerns about a bar. Some of the accidents that happen, we don't know if they break into the bar or if they break it out. But this is a very dangerous area. ODOT's trying to address the traffic situation to make it safe for us. There are severe accidents out there all the time. I'm not saying these people may be completely intoxicated when they leave this restaurant bar, but even just a few beers, we all know, does affect people's driving. There's 18-wheel professional drivers pulling out in front of traffic. It's a very dangerous intersection they're trying to address. And right now, I don't believe that that would be a good fit. Like I said, welcome restaurant. I'm not saying, like I said, don't worry so much. I'm not going to be totally intoxicated. We have long work with that. But people without the influence of alcohol are dying. Very severe accidents out there. Luckily, nobody's died, I think, this year. But that's why ODOT is trying to correct this road situation. And people get careless, and I really don't want a bar in there. I don't want children that's playing in here. They're riding bicycles, riding across the street from there. I'm not saying this is going to be a bad place, but I've seen it turn into a bad place. And to respect the people that've lived there for 50 years, elderly people, most of them church-going people who oppose bars just because of that, I don't... I just don't think this is a good fit for it. It's a very small lot, not ample parking. They're a very difficult area to even get into where he's proposing this. And that's my greatest concern.
Okay, thank you.
I might just go on my thing.
Hold on, who's talking?
Anita.
Okay, you would come back up.
I contacted the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers last night, and she had a funeral today, and she also lives in Rogers County. And the comment was made from her, her not being here to speak, which, you know, I just thought about it late, to give her opinion of what happens in Rogers County. But the comment was made, if you, the people we vote in, would go around and ask every person in Rogers and Wagner County that has lost a friend, sorry, and I have, friend or family member from a drunk driver, if you said, "Give me $1,000 not to vote for this," they would do it. So she's speaking from all the people she knows that has lost loved ones, and those are the people that are voting you guys in. And that's just kind of where it lays. You have to think about everybody in the county. And our families are the ones that are closer to that. And statistic-wise, I mean, and not everybody's going to leave drunk. I know that. Having a drink is one thing, but there are people that don't know when to stop. They get in their cars, and it's us that live there, and our kids, and our grandkids. And statistic-wise, it would probably be one of our families that would get killed by the drivers.
Thank you. Did you have something else? We're going to wrap this up because this is starting to be repetitive, so...
My question is, again, because this has been brought up, and I forgot to bring it up a while ago, that this young man from the planning commission made the comment, I think you said that Admiral was half a mile or two miles away from where this is?
No, no, no. The traffic count for this, for Admiral, was two and a half miles away.
Two and a half miles away from that? And that's up at the Dollar General, just so you know. It's up there. And we all love it in the area, but there's ample parking and ample way into it. The attorney, Mr. Higgins, made the comment about that ODOT was looking at this and looking at where it could be turned in and how they could do it. That's already been established as to what ODOT was going to do except for building the four-leaf clovers over there. The concern, again, is about the traffic and the four-leaf clovers, people coming off of that highway, driving too fast. What if they... That's an accident waiting to happen for a bar right there at that four-leaf clover as well. Or a house, any business. I don't care what it is. Any business right there, it's an accident waiting to happen for that business right there close to that clover leaf. But ODOT has already done what they've been doing and what they've planned on doing. And so there is no access off of 305th other than going down and doing that dog leg around in there. So, and a truck can't get there. And we're parking on 305th, which is already an accident waiting to happen. I stopped to look at the sign. I had about four cars that passed me, including a couple of trucks, and I got flipped off or standing there, sitting there for five minutes in my car on the side of the road. Not a good place to sit. So, again, whenever I ask you to do this, I understand all of these people that have family. I live up the road, and I don't want this either. And it's not just strictly because it's a bar and there's going to be people drinking. I don't want the restaurant there either because I don't think that it is something that is going to be aesthetically appealing to our community because you're going to have problems with the traffic and people out there, that there's just no room.
Does the applicant wish to speak on his own behalf, or are you satisfied with your representation?
I'm satisfied with my representation.
Okay. Mr. Curtis, do you have anything further concerning this issue?
Only to answer your questions.
The planning commission voted, you said, three to three?
Yes, sir.
So it was a tie? What was their reasoning for voting for or against?
Most notably, yes. Most notably, these two of the people who voted against it stated out of the conference of plan, the statement that residential development should be respected was their reasoning for voting against it.
Okay. And what, in what respect? What does that mean exactly? Residential areas should be respected?
That's the great thing about the comprehensive plan is that it can be interpreted in many ways. It's not very specific. So it's stating that, basically, the surrounding residential development should be respected. The question is, should it be respected only in Rogers County or should it also be respected in Wagner County as well? That is not, that is left up to debate on how that should be...
Well, I would interpret that as to be a good neighbor to the South. Be respect the entire... What does that mean, to be respected? I mean, it's one thing for people to say, "I don't want this in my neighborhood." That's not a valid, that's just not a valid concern. Because, I mean, I don't want to live across the road from a man who doesn't can, but I do.
Well, the comprehensive plan does require that about any residential development that it needs to have, property needs to be surrounded by privacy fence. So that is one thing that can be implemented as a requirement. And this is not the final stop for this. If it does move forward for this project is that there will be a planning requirement along with there, to the extent that the planning commission is involved, there will be a calculation required for parking, which I did do a calculation just now, looking at what has been provided to the county. There would be 34 parking spots required, and that's averaging the size of the property. And it requires one lot for a 75 feet. One parking lot for 75 square feet of the construction of the building with an average size of 200 square feet for a parking spot. That averages out to be about 34 parking spots.
Are there that many on the elevation?
Yes, sir. 55.
55?
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns, one of the things stated was, if you'd had more time to get the word out, believe me, the word's out. My phone was blowing up yesterday, so you've done well. The concern that I heard over and over was, what if the restaurant goes bankrupt, goes out of business? He sells the property. Are there any, anything that the planning commissioner or the county can do about that? Or is it, once it's zoned, it's zoned from now on?
If the property did go bankrupt, if it went to foreclosure, if the county became possession of the property, we could, the board could direct the planning commission to re-review the zoning of the property and could zone it to a lower classification.
Bankrupt, okay, but what about if it's just sold? That was another question.
If it is sold, it is sold. The zoning stays in place.
And the other concern, and you addressed it, but I'd like you to address it again, adult entertainment-type businesses was mentioned several times.
Thank you. Okay, so in the ordinance book specifically states in section 603(c)(2)E, there are actually a notable, a number of things that if it's within 1,000 feet of this property, it cannot be developed, parks, private parks, residential, or, I mean, residential and religious facilities. And if there was an adjacent or another adult-themed entertainment facility within 1,000 feet, it also cannot be strewn either. But because there is RT located right across the street from this property, you cannot have an adult-themed entertainment building located there.
What are the repercussions if they decide to put one in anyway?
Shut down immediately.
And what would, how would that, what's the mechanism for doing that?
That would be a project between my office, the district attorney's office, and the sheriff's office to be able to step in and shut down the facility.
Okay. Anything you want to add?
Strictly on the, I cannot give my personal opinion on this as I am appointing to the board to give rational reasoning for this project. The strict zoning description that's given for C5 zoning specifically states that C5 zoning should be along highway districts. This is along highway district, clearly. The comprehensive plan does encourage commercial development for those that are traveling along the highway, including eating establishments. Strictly based off of what the comprehensive plan and what the zoning type requested, I make a recommendation for approval based off of that information.
Give me the negative. Are there any negatives other than, other than people just don't want it in their neighborhood? I mean, a valid...
At this time, it's based off speculation of what could happen.
Right.
I cannot find, other than what could happen, to be a negative at this fucking time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hill?
Larry?
Yes, sir.
We went to the max C5. Can he not do the same thing with C4?
No, sir.
So what's the limitation?
The limitation is the selling of alcohol that is required for C5 zoning.
So he had to go all the way to C5?
Yes. No, no. It was brought to the attention to the planning commission, and... Yes. No, it was brought to the attention, to the Planning Commission and asked the applicant if he would be selling only low-point gear, that would be defined in your grocery store. Because you can do that in a lower classification as an auxiliary bar. That, you know, we actually have a C2 for that, but the applicant stated that there's a high selling private point of commerce out there.
He's a hard worker, huh?
Yeah, so that's required for the C5.
So in this, in the C5 and to the residents, I'm just asking questions here. In the residences that showed up to protest, did you explain to them, when the, when the Planning Commission denied it and if the Board of County Commissioners denied it, it still doesn't end there that this, the applicant can appeal to District Court?
Yes.
And in most of those cases, District Court allows it?
Usually, yes.
Did you explain that?
Could I explain that? Only to the Planning Commission members, not to the applicant's request. No one asked any questions, so I did not answer that.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have any questions? Question or delusion? Anything further? Okay. I want, I'll make a motion to a little recess for about ten minutes. Second question.
I first.
Aye.
Delusion? Y'all?
Ten away.
Recession for five minutes.
It fills up inside.
It's true.
Again, he drives over.
Yes, sir.
We have one. We have. Besides, one of us almost hit her. She was hexing.
I might be coming. You've got your spec and everything, right?
Yeah, I saw it. I didn't have Jason looking at it.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I brought you a turkey at Christmas. Did you get it?
No.
I hung it on the door because you weren't there and I told your neighbor, I gave her one too while I was there.
Oh, yeah, back then. That's where you, I grew it from. Yeah.
Still good when you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, I was worried it might thaw down.
Hi, how are you? We're usually not gone too long.
We stopped by there and you weren't there, so the neighbor was watching this.
Yeah.
The door. And so I went over there and told her I was and I said, "Are you gonna come back?" And she said, "I, I don't know." And I said, "Do you want a turkey?" No, the one right next door to you.
Oh, the younger, the younger couple, yeah.
And I said, "You want a turkey?" And she said, "What?"
Yeah.
I promise you, it's nothing wrong with it, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I've been gonna run into you and I just had to see.
Okay. Target's ready to weld.
Don't get me... How did you?
Yes.
They took us on, they took us on a tour. Oh, thank you.
I forgot those, they drink that home?
It's, 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 tell people.
Well, I've been having...
She's coming back. Not that many, but it did get some.
Strange somewhere. Two, two years of drought, now I have this. I had somebody come in, they got out of town, they're like, "I've never seen..." I mean, I don't know, it was like a potion. I'll tell you, it takes a lot.
I wanted to ask for a copy of the new cash estimate of need that they're gonna discuss here a little bit. No, I just left it on. I'll probably take the middle part out, but it's just easier to run it out. Yeah, yeah, I think it's, you know, or I can put a note or whatever. I don't know. I'm sure that's embarrassing. In the past, I've actually...
Yeah, I was on there trying to catch it, it was so wet one time and I just tried to take it, toss it right there. I couldn't catch it and it leaves it white. I tried it on yesterday, it took me two hours to do just the back.
Chriskey, did he say if he was returning?
Uh, he said he would be one way or another.
Can you just check on him? Excuse me.
Ten minutes? About twenty minutes.
Can I make a motion to come back from recess and call this meeting back to order? Second.
Sackler?
Here.
Deluger?
Aye.
Hale?
Here.
Again, forum.
Okay. Concerning item number nine, we have had a public hearing. We've discussed zoning changes. And before, which it's a majority vote is how it works, but before anyone makes a motion or anything like that, I want to say that I understand your concerns and I abhor alcohol for personal reasons. However, at the end of the day, business is business and I can't find anything in the comprehensive plan that says this is not what was planned for that court. Just so you know, as those of you that are in Rogers County, as a Rogers County taxpayer, you know, like, like it was stated, if we can deny it, it can go right on up to District Court and a judge gets to decide. And, you know, the judge really couldn't care less, I assume, about who wants it, who doesn't want it. They're gonna look at what the law says. So, based on our Planning Commission Director's recommendation, I can't see a reason other than personal to deny it. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, this zoning. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sackler?
Aye.
Deluger?
Aye.
Hale?
No.
Motion's been carried.
If you're here for the zoning issue, you don't have to stay. You can be, you can leave if you like or you're welcome to stay. Item number nine, come, let's see where we had it. Item number 10, Platts, we have none. Item number 11, Roats Bridges, Rogers County Eight-Year Plan, Mr. Lickensurfer.
Thank you. I have revisions to the eight-year plan for your consideration.
I have revisions to the eight-year plan for your consideration. John Lickensfer with Guy Engineering, we're the program managers for Circuit Engineering District Number One, which Rogers County is a part of. And part of our responsibilities are updating the CIRB plans, which is the county improvement to road and bridges funding that the state has provided to the counties. All the changes are highlighted zero in yellow, and I'm going to go through them one at a time for you. At the very, first thing, at the very top, you'll see in 2019, on the CRB income, is highlighted in yellow. That income, when we originally set up these new eight-year plans, was put in an error, so we had to correct it. It was originally a little over five million in 2019, which was an error. It shouldn't have been about two and a half million, which we show there today. So, I apologize for that error. Of the eleven county plans, we did, five of them have income errors in the later years. We had to correct those after ODAT. The second item is on Bridge 107, 108 corridor project, which is being handled by Kellogg Engineering. Got an update for him, the utility costs are going to be more than planned. It was originally fourteen thousand utilities, it's going to be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars now due to some significant water line changes, so. Then on the 193rd Street project, which is an STP project, after negotiations with the city of Tulsa on the relocation of their water lines, we updated all of the utility cost for that project, as well as we updated the right-of-way cost based on the new right-of-way line. So, those increases are included in there. And then, the project is STP funded for a million right now. The plan is to submit and try to get an additional million of STPs, so therefore I've shown four hundred thousand in matching money to go with that two million. There's no guarantee we'll get the extra million at this point in time, but we will submit a request for that.
Okay, if you don't get the extra million, then where will it come from?
We do not know yet. It could possibly come out of this plan, that is one option. Then, on the reverse side, you'll see the Wingon Crossing project, which by the way lasts next Thursday. That project was originally programmed in this plan at two point six million in construction. However, ODAT was very aggressive in getting ER funds to fund that project, so the cost to the county out of their CRB plan wanted to be seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, based on that, there were substantial savings on that project, which is a District One project. So, District One Commissioner wanted to add some other projects in there. So, we've added Bridge 85 trip to Seminole Creek, Bridge 74 Sweetwater Creek, and Bridge 73 Sweetwater Creek. And we saved approximately two million dollars, and he put about one point five million projects in. So, overall, he actually saved the county plan about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those are all of the changes to the plan. And I would recommend that the board approve that, and we will post it and send it on out to ODAT.
Do you have questions, gentlemen? Motion to approve. You have one you want to sign?
Yes. It's actually if you want, you can do two, one for your record and one for me. And you have your stamp here, so you can sign it.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number twelve, cash fund estimate of needs and request for appropriations. This item is this.
Well, this is what we're going to start doing monthly, we did it last month.
It's two of them?
So, Hale?
Yeah, exactly.
We don't have that one back for the commissary, Teresa. Oh, here she is, she's here.
They were emailing the figures to her last week. But I guess she wanted me to come over and handwrite them on the other times. I sent them over, but I have them, if you want me to fill them in now.
Does she sign them?
Okay, item number thirteen, what was to do with this?
Um, look them over, hopefully approve them. These go before the exercise board later this afternoon.
Hey, John?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have any questions, please, gentlemen?
Somebody on with the sheriff, John, if you'd see. Capital outlay on courthouse security?
We're getting ready to binge eating today.
Okay, I'll just check and see if that's working. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number thirteen, transfer of funds, sixteen dash one thirty-one officers travel allowance to sixteen dash one thirty, assess their travel for five hundred thirty-eight dollars twenty-five cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Utility permits, number one, Chelsea Gas Authority, board most of mainline and transservice lines to parallel county highway or local road, foil, south Andy Payne Boulevard, approximately point one nine miles of south Highway sixty-six, or five hundred feet south of Third Street, further described as fifteen hundred feet southeast of the northwest corner of Section thirty-two, Township twenty-three north, range seventeen east, Rogers County. Commissioner Delozer?
Mr. Curtis?
This is in, this is municipal authority, and so therefore they do not have any, these are not in place, so therefore it does meet the requirements, and I do recommend approval.
Okay, motion to approve. Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number two, Towne Ulgah, open cut to cross town highway, the local road East four hundred road, approximately point zero eight miles west of East four hundred road in US one sixty-nine junction, further described as one thousand nine hundred eighteen feet west of the southeast corner of Section twenty-eight, Township twenty-three, north range fifteen east, in Rogers County. Commissioner Hale?
Where is it? I see a town, I look, I want to cut and want to put.
No, this is part of the drain achievement for the Apple grocery store, and so the system in that cross.
So, it's for the new grocery store?
Make merchant to approve.
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number three, AT&amp;T Oklahoma, trenching and boring to cross parallel county highway, local road East five forty, approximately two miles of west, East five forty road and Highway sixty-six, described as eight thousand feet west of the southeast corner of Section three, Township twenty north, range fifteen, Rogers County. Director Curtis?
Uh, yes, this is a utility permit for you, developed by AT&amp;T. A bond is not in place, but they will have a bond in this week. Based off the cooperation that we have with AT&amp;T, everything in their application is true to form. I make a recommendation for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number four, AT&amp;T Oklahoma, trenching and boring telephone lines crossing and paralleling East five twenty road and Amma Parkway to cross parallel county highway, local road East five twenty, approximately a half a mile of Highway sixty-six and East five twenty road. Further described, twenty-five hundred feet east of the southeast corner, Section twenty-five, Township twenty-one north, range fifteen, east Rogers County. Yeah, Commissioner Curtis, Director Curtis?
Yes, that is the same thing on this permit, it's plus the bridges front.
Okay, motion to approve, second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number five, BCI allegiance LLC underground will be boring and plowing. All paved roads will be bored, overhead construction to hang point two five inches, inch strand and one forty-eight count fiber optic cable to parallel across county highway, local road Gregory School Road, East five ninety road, South forty-one sixty road, South forty-one eighty, approximately point six six miles west of South forty-one sixty road and East five ninety road, and further described as three thousand five hundred sixty-nine feet west of the northeast corner, Section four, Township nineteen, north range sixteen east. Director Curtis?
Yes, this is a fiber line that will be running across the entire length of the county, all the way up to, from the east side of the county board through I know what, all the way to the forty-one twenty road, and where it will go over to Viper County and then on into Tulsa County.
Who's BCI?
It is a subcontractor for, I believe, Google, who is putting in a fiber line all the way through.
Okay, any recommendations?
To approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number six, BCI allegiance LLC, overhoed, overhead construction to hang one forty-eight count fiber optic cable. The fiber will be overlashed to existing allegiance communication plant to parallel across county highway, local road forty-one ninety, South forty-one ninety-five, East five ninety road, South forty-two hundred road, East six hundred road, approximately point four one miles of west of East five ninety road and South forty-one ninety road, and further described, two thousand ninety-two feet west of the southeast corner of Section thirty-six, Township twenty, range sixteen east, Rogers County.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
And the last utility permit, number seven, BCI allegiance LLC, overhead construction to hang two forty-eight count fiber optic cables. The fiber will be overlashed to the existing allegiance communications plant to cross and parallel county highway or local road East five ninety-five, South forty-two thirty, East five eighty, approximately point zero one miles east of forty-two fifteen road and East five ninety-five road, and further described as three thousand eight hundred fifty-one feet southwest of northeast corner of Section four, Township nineteen, north range seventeen, east Rogers County. Mr. Curtis?
Means more of the same.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale? Motion's been carried and approved.
Do we have anything under item fifteen?
No, we don't.
Do we have anything under item sixteen, wanting purchase orders?
Uh, we have blankets, number one, only.
One only?
District three to Pixley Number for three hundred. And District three to Ameriflex Hose and Accessories for five hundred.
That's all?
That's all.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number eighteen, payment requisition, construction fund, RCB Bank trustee, BKL Incorporated, invoice number thirty-seven, in the amount of eight thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Motion to approve?
Second.
Sacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item nineteen, agenda item number one, updated by BKL Incorporated and Flint Co. regarding courthouse and nine one one center projects. Mr. Fay?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, on the EOC project, we should be wrapping that up this week. On the nine one one center, we've completed the tile work in the bathrooms, installed about ninety percent of the drop ceilings. They're gridded for the drop ceiling, and we're just finishing up putting some lights in and the above ceiling work before we actually put the ceiling tile in, but everything is going well.
All right, questions for Mr. Fay? All right, thank you. Item number two, discussion of possible action regarding Burrows Insurance Agency concerning invoice for the jail. Commissioner Hale?
This was, uh, this was put on there because it, you know, criminal justice meeting, we tangled their invoice and wanted to make sure that we had adequate coverage on the jail for criminal justice, since it was approved. And I contacted Mr. Burrows, and he said when we paid the full price of our insurance, that we are covered in the criminal justice side. So, it would be for the criminal justice to pay back the Board of County Commissioners into our general fund after the payment was made from what we approved back before the July first with his, uh, his insurance for the jail, for the courthouse, for bond, for the elective vehicle, for the jail and sheriff and everybody. We are covered, so it's a place for, it is just simply the moving of that money where we talked about splitting and out criminal justice paying for that portion.
Okay, do you want to?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to give you a heads up on Burrows, it's just to let you know about it, but he said we did have coverage, he couldn't be here today, he's having that procedure.
I think one of the biggest concerns that everybody had in criminal justice authority meeting was that it looked like the amount had doubled in price, and it hadn't, it's always been there. Part of it's always been paid by the Board of Commissioners instead of, instead of out of, I mean, out of the jail fund. That's what the difference was.
So, when we were looking at, when we were looking at our total costs, like we discussed from the board, that had to pick up the remainder of what we did last year, it's to give a fair accounting procedure on what is actually owed to the board from criminal justice.
Okay, so we'll take no action on that, that's an acknowledgement. Item number three, discussion of possible action regarding having the payroll month be one hundred and seventy-three hours.
Mr. Curtis, can I ask you to go back just a second and check with the man on? Uh, because Teresa had a question on that earlier, and I want to make. uh, 'cause Teresa had a question on that earlier, and I want to make sure on the invoice to Burrows, I just want to make sure that that was, uh, an action item that was taken care of.
The, um, I still haven't distinguished for myself, uh, haven't spoken to Mr. Burrows, but in looking at the invoices from last year and this year, it appears that that total bill wouldn't be paid with what the county general fund paid. I'm not sure if he just is meaning that because it was paid on that policy, it's the same policy number, that everything is covered, but I'm still a little confused as to whether that money that the criminal justice authority will be approving to pay is going to, back to the commissioners or going to Burrows Agency? My understanding is the agency.
And that's two different things, I just wanted to make sure we recovered what you said he was. This again is for him to explain his own accounting procedures to, to the clerk.
I believe what, uh, what he explained to me was it would be to the, it would be to the agency, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't come back to your commissioners, it's, uh, it's the short, I mean, it's the amount that still hasn't been paid on the insurance.
Okay.
It's the sixty-two, whatever it is.
Sixty-two.
And so you focus this in regard to the criminal justice authority?
Okay, Thursday or Friday?
Be attending that meeting, so that gets clarified at that meeting.
Yes.
And then on item three, the clerk contacted me and asked me if you could put that on and I could get at it. Maybe wrong.
Madam Clerk, you want to discuss that?
Well, um, historically, um, some months have one hundred and sixty-eight hours, some months have one hundred and seventy-six hours, and if you're figuring up an hourly wage for someone, um, it's different every month, um, like if there's terminations or someone, you know, for any reason, so, uh, we just thought it would be so much simpler to have one hundred and seventy-three hours, and then that person, uh, the people would have the same hourly wage every month. I know other counties, um, do it this way, one hundred and seventy-three hours on a consistent basis.
What's the benefit of, of changing one hundred and seventy-three?
That's the main benefit right there, and then for keeping purposes, it's also, it would also be a lot easier.
So what we would be saying is if it's, if it's, say it's February, it's twenty-eight days, we're saying that we're gonna pay them more hours than they actually worked? I need help with that.
No, the one hundred and seventy-three hours would be used to, uh, arrive at their hourly wage on a consistent basis, um, that in the month of February, they wouldn't make their money per hour than they would in the month of August, because if you use the monthly hours that are available to work, it changes your hourly wage, and when we're receiving some payroll claims in, they're basically saying, okay, well, the hourly wage this month is divided by one hundred and eighty-six hours, so this month you're gonna make twelve dollars an hour, but if we were working in February under the same pretense of figuring it that way, you might make eighteen dollars an hour. So we would like to see a consistency on applying to the hourly wage, the one hundred and seventy-three hours for the math on a consistent basis.
But it also, uh, it's like, if you go to work somewhere, they, they hold your pay back a week so that you're not being overpaid, so if you come in and, say you terminate someone on, after the, the paperwork is done, then you have to go back and figure their hours in order not to pay them for times that haven't worked.
Any other discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pentley weigh in on this?
Well, I'm not a payroll expert, but we're salary, the majority of our people are salaried employees, so the rate of pay each month really doesn't have to do anything with active employees, it's more for terminated employees or finding their hourly rate, so if it's gonna be a consistent rate for the entire year being one hundred and seventy-three hours, that's what we should do.
With this, it, say, say we have a FEMA incident, and, and this would give us an hourly rate, straight hourly rate all the time, instead of having to figure each month to see what, what the hourly rate was for that month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and as to, to, uh, any differences on, uh, law enforcement, is how law enforcement hourly rate we've, uh, become as well, how does that affect that at all?
Well, it's not gonna affect what they're paid, basically it's gonna affect what, what their cost is per hour, the hours worked is still gonna be determined by the department, but the hourly rate will be consistent each month of the twelve months of the year. So one month you're not making one hourly rate, the next month you're making another hourly rate, it's just consistent for the twelve months, if we have a policy that we figure that on the one hundred and seventy-three hours per month, that lets us arrive at an hourly wage for that employee to be consistent month to month. Your hours are still gonna be determined by the department at that rate. So I don't see that it would matter whether it's law enforcement, or as long as they have an hourly rate of pay, even if they're salaried.
Are you talking about comp time? Because that's the difference between the sheriff's office and, not necessarily the entire office, but law enforcement and, I forgot how they spell languages, but that's actually comp time, is they arrive at a different comp rate than we do based on their hours of work, we do over forty, theirs is one hundred and seventy-one, yeah, it's a different comp time rate.
And, and that's, that's my concern, is if we set, uh, how that, how one affects the other, when you're coming down to a separation from employment.
It would still be their hourly rate, so instead of, as an employee of the county, you get paid twenty-five hundred of, a month, this way we can say twenty-five hundred a month, but when we do payroll, it's fourteen fifty-eight an hour, and we'll always know that the twenty-five hundred dollar a month employee actually is paid fourteen fifty-eight an hour.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
Is this a contract recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Make a motion to approve. I'll say it.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number four, discussion of possible action regarding Cox Commercial Services Agreement between E nine one one and, on behalf of Board of County Commissioners, um, okay, Director Hamilton?
This is a contract for services for, uh, uh, internet and telephone services for the, um, nine one one center, this is an annual contract, it was approved last year, we're requesting it be approved again this year.
Gentlemen, Mr. Iskey has approved it to form.
I think a question you might want to have, Commissioners, what fund you're paying out of that kind of problem you heard earlier in discussion, Al.
That's a good point.
I don't know.
Which, which one though?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Questions, discussion? Motion to approve? I'll say it.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye, can I ask a question, Mr. Iskey?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Iskey, one is, if, if you were challenging commercial services to the nine one one center, right?
Internet and telephone services, yes, dot com.
To the internet, I mean, to the nine one one center, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I know given that, but if it's, if anything that does, that does with equipping, building operations, can that not come out of the bond? You don't have to answer, can you, can you look into that?
I'd be glad to look at it, I can't give you an answer, and we shouldn't give you an answer off the top of my head.
But if that way, if we're, if we're saying the bond is for equipping, operations, and maintenance and building the place, then anything like this that can offset through bonds instead of through general fund or through one forty, whatever fund you just said?
One forty-one.
Oh, one forty-one, then it would be a part of the bond. But that's a question.
I, I'll be glad to look at that and get back to you, uh, in discussions with Ms. Hamilton, though I think it's a matter of she needs to move forward.
Yeah, I'm not saying, that's why I went ahead and did it after, but, that she could have, go ahead and do it, but as we look at the future, or even for paying back, it would come out of the bond. I'll, I'll look ahead and get back to you.
Hey, Dan, you're in charge of the, the nine one one, do you want to pay contracts out of bond money, or do you want to pay out of one forty-one?
Um, it'll come out of one forty-one, see, I can come out of bond money.
So, Mr. Iskey, you can probably save me some time, um, by not having to look into that.
I'd still like to look at it.
All right, here we go.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number five, resolution for disposing of equipment, District three, two thousand and five freightliner ten-wheel dump truck, D three oh two dash zero three five nine, uh, the VIN number is reflected in your agenda to be sold at auction at McAllister on September the twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, uh, and we can do these two together if you like. Number six, resolution for disposing of equipment, District three, nineteen ninety-one freightliner pull trucks, uh, D number three oh two oh three two six, serial number reflected in your agenda, uh, to be sold at McAllister Auction, September twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, these are two trucks that are surplus, uh, they're older, well, one of them is older, one of them, um, I just, I don't want it at District three anymore, uh, it was involved in an accident, so I'll make motion to approve items five and six.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved on items five and six.
Item number seven, discuss, discussion of possible action regarding approval, disapproval of employment agreement by and among the Board of County Commissioners, Rogers County Enhanced nine one one Trust Authority and Riggs Avenue, Neil, Turkman, Orbison, and Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, this is a contract that I prepared, uh, it was in response to and out of the last meeting of this commission where it was discussed, it's my standard employment agreement, uh, with the significant change that we talked about, because the county under this contract would agree to pay my firm's legal fees through the end of this year, uh, however, the nine one one authority then would reimburse the county by March one for those legal expenses, and that's what this contract provides, and it's, uh, Mr. Iskey has reviewed it, uh, and, uh, thought it was important to come back to this commission for approval, I agree.
Questions? I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Mr. Orbison?
Chairman?
Sir?
Before you go to number eight, because we didn't take action on number, uh, two, that had to do with, uh, the nine one one unless, unless we made it covered, which was, yeah?
Again, that was my reasoning for asking, uh, Ms. Jackson to, to, to address that, because I think there is an invoice that, um, paid still, and it has to be taken care of.
Because he said it was basically null in it, that's why we moved on.
Number two, number two says discussion of possible action, so, uh, we can take?
I had understood that, that there was no, I mean, there was an invoice that needed to be paid, and it was for the, for the jail trust, but it was part of the, uh, of the insurance. Anybody else understand that one?
That's fine. Thanks, I will look to.
Until we'll do this. Well, that's a piece where Mr. Burrows has said that our policy is paid, that's why the criminal justice got paid, but it's an internal with Mr. Burrows, if that, that total amount invoiced, is it included in our payment or not, which he didn't say.
I think he, the way I understood it, it is split out, but it's, uh, this part is the criminal justice, the rest of it has been paid, am I correct, Teresa? So this part hasn't been paid, this is the part for the criminal justice, that before, I guess criminal justice paid half of this, and the Board of Commissioners paid the other half.
So we're gonna continue that?
Well, either that, or we can go ahead and do it.
Pay it on, I don't know if they'll do that?
Uh-huh, I think, I think the biggest question I had, or that was asked in the criminal justice authority was, how come it doubled in price, but then after talking to him, it made, you know, it, it makes sense, he can just split the rest of it out for the criminal justice.
Now, beforehand, we were, we were taking with some of the subsidies and paying for the, where the criminal justice was, uh, side that it was higher than what we were charged. I guess you can go ahead, number eight, I'm sorry, Jim.
Okay. Discussion of possible action regarding the application for amended temporary appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, Madam Clerk?
Teresa Jackson, wants to discuss.
Teresa Jackson.
Uh, Chairman, this is on, um, splitting out the in terms of benefits that this board, uh, had approved earlier, that we would, uh, create an account just for insurance and benefits for the employees, and, um, of course, that couldn't be accomplished by July, so July's was paid from the normal twenty dash two hundred out general government, this would be to amend the temporary appropriations to create this account for that to come from, eventually, when our budget is complete, we would reimburse the twenty dash two hundred account for the month of July, but this would let us start in August, uh, taking those monies directly from an insurance and benefit account.
Can you see this?
No, I don't see it.
We have a motion?
Someone?
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number nine, open and award VIN number six twenty-two, specification for multi-energy single view x-ray inspection system with a tunnel aperture of five hundred fifty millimeters wide and three hundred sixty millimeters high, Sheriff's Office. Okay, uh, we sent out three bids, we received one bid, zero bids were returned undeliverable. Okay, the first bid is from Jason Allen, U.S. Testing Equipment. Okay, there were several, uh, items listed in the specs. The total of this quotation, it says, is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars each. And that is the only bid, uh, under Sheriff?
I, I'd like to request that you guys accept this bid and conduct that process.
I'll make a motion to approve that, we'll, we'll, we'll say, U.S. Testing Equipment, that was the one and only bid.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number ten? Item number ten, open and award VIN number six two three, adjustable console furniture for Rogers County Dispatch Center. Sent out twelve, twelve bids, received three bids, uh, we had one no bid, zero return as undeliverable.
Here's the no bid.
Okay, had no bid. Was wrong about it. Yes, sir. First bid opened is OCI, Alcohol Correctional Industries. Okay, it looks like the total bid, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars, forty-four cents. Okay, next bid is for Rod, Juris County, it says. This is from... Ash... It's in here? The bid for Rod, Juris County.
There it was.
Yep, there it was. This quote, total thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars, ninety cents.
Thirty-nine thousand, what, ninety?
Thirty-nine, ninety-nine, ninety cents. Nine ninety, I'm sorry, nine ninety. Have you got a, a stick pad or something I can mark this page? Thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars, ninety cents.
Table this, won't you?
Is it all over?
Make a motion to table this for one week.
One more?
Excuse me, let's go ahead and get them all then. You ever send that motion?
Died. Died for lack of a second. Rogers County Eaton. Holy heck, heck. Uh, bid number six two three, seventy thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars, seventy-four cents. And it goes on to say work of nature, delivery.
Is that all of them?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to table for one week, put these bids over.
I'll second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried, to table for one week.
Item number eleven, open and award VIN number six two four, dispatch protocol, emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, and emergency police dispatch for Rogers County Consolidated Dispatch Center. Uh, five workstations. Sent out three bids, received three bids. Emergency dispatch software systems, uh, the vendor, priority dispatch. Is there any way you can, in the future, have a place where we can write in? Just also, you know, something, this is the first page. Total, one hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars. Priority dispatch. Next one is from Appco International. And they did specify, specified delivery date, this one says, uh, three to six months from start. Notice that, I don't see. Total, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. It doesn't say, if that's hurting, then it's a total. Okay. Power funnel is the vendor.
It's for five workstations, is what it says.
Really?
Says for five workstations.
Miss, what we have is five workstations?
Yep.
It's to be used on five workstations.
Yep. For a total of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
No, Appco?
I thought that may be each, but it says total.
You want me to elaborate on that?
Can you make that a say?
They may... It appears that they've put everything that the price is. But I could be mistaken. Oh, here we go, here we go. Total price, thirty-three thousand, two hundred twenty dollars, fifty cents. Okay, is that all of them?
Yes, sir.
Can you streamline those bids?
I can.
I'm not gonna go through them anymore, we're on the front page.
Make a motion to table this for one week.
I'll second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion has been carried and tabled for one week.
Item twenty, announcements regarding county events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments and elected officials as follows. A, nine one one administrator, Director Hamilton.
We have a meeting Thursday with the Trust Authority, board members, and then a Thursday afternoon, a voter roll meeting, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Assessor, building and operations.
Morning, Commissioners. How long's your order? Tomorrow, I need to take off just a little bit, my son's heaven service. I'm gonna be here for everyone regional with him, and I think that's supposed to be afternoon, but it may change. So, be off tomorrow a little bit, uh, and then the first of the September, I'm gonna take off, take just, uh, one or two days, I'm not sure yet. My two new, new employees are working out great, so we have, uh, Madonna, she's, uh, taking care of most of the second floor and also helping Michaela here on first floor a little bit, so she's, she's worked great for us. And then, uh, Charlie, he's also helping us, he's doing most of the hallways, the dusting, and, uh, helping us keep the trash picked up around the courthouse also, so they're both on the cleaning side for us. So, that's it, we're doing a great job from OSU, we got the flower beds prepped for him, so, got all the weeds out, we got the fertilizer in that he recommended to us, and I believe we'll be getting that list, and, uh, probably won't put any flowers in there, you're gonna die, we're gonna go ahead and try and get, uh, hedges and that stuff in, so...
Get plenty of rain.
And we have plenty of rain, it's rigorous to do.
Did make the grass look good, didn't it?
We're also working on trying to move a couple of the smaller trees from the old courthouse over here, so we're working on getting that. Uh, we're hoping the city could help us with the tree spade, but they've gotten rid of theirs, they just contracted that out, so we're looking for a way to move some of those over. Thank you, man.
Thank you. County clerk?
Nothing to report, sir.
Court clerk? District attorney?
Nothing additional.
Election board? Emergency management, Director Stokes?
Yes, sir. I went over the other day with, uh, at the new E O C, walked over. We went up on the roof, looked at how we, with David Hill from the sheriff's office, and I didn't have permission to get up there, but... And, uh, and with, uh, took John Harwell up on part of it, he was physically unable to make it up to higher area, but, uh, he's with our ham operators group here in town, we're trying to get some ideas on how we could mount an antenna up there with approval through the sheriff's office, and, uh, we're thinking we can do it at a pretty reasonable price, so, um, and that's to get the, can, uh, should be a pretty short run for the cables too. We should have all the cable that's already existing that we can use to get the radios, radios installed. Um, having Oklahoma Emergency Management Conference next week, so I will not be in the meeting. I've got some training classes on Monday that I've gotta attend, and as part of my agreement for, uh, in a required agreement for, for, to receive the S L A grant. And, just a reminder that courthouse safety training is tomorrow. It'll run just like it did last week. All department heads need to get their people there every hour on the hour, except for, uh, noon to one. And we have an L E P C, our second L E P C meeting will be Wednesday at eleven o'clock, and the agenda is posted for the county clerk.
Any questions for...
The antennas that was taken off the top of the courthouse are just sitting over there. What are we supposed to do with those? What are we going to do with them?
Uh, hopefully, one of those, we, and we, we're gonna try to combine them to make it a little bit taller, but I don't think we're gonna, they're different sizes, and I don't think we're gonna be able to do that. I was hoping there was some kind of a, put the bigger one on the bottom and then adjust down, but I don't think that's gonna be possible. They, he, Mr. Harwell talked about those sections, they're only a couple hundred bucks per eight-foot section, so that really wouldn't, the cost to raise it up another sixteen feet or so wouldn't be too bad, and...
I was just a little concerned with them sitting over there, somebody may wanna take one of those antennas off.
Yeah, it, I, well, unless somebody really knew what those things were, uh...
Oh, that's, I don't think they're gonna know what they are, I'm just worried somebody might go in there and take something off of, with them sitting outside. Do we need to try to move them to a more secure area?
Probably now.
Yeah, I'm saying something. But it, you know, it does make you a little nervous when they're just sitting over there. Uh, if they roll over just right, and we got them just right, it may tear up something too, so...
Yeah, I just, I don't know where we're gonna move them to, you know, 'cause as soon as we can, if we can, you know, make the agreement on how to get them up there and get them installed, and we can just lift them from here to there, it'd be a little easier, but, um, you know, I mean, it's...
Okay.
But that shouldn't...
Okay, any other questions for Director Stokes?
Director Stokes, you mentioned courthouse safety training.
Yes, sir.
Right, so when we mention courthouse safety training, we mention courthouse. Are you reaching out to the state entities that are above this courthouse that have the other three floors?
Yes.
To also participate?
Yes.
In our courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody's invited, I walked around personally, knocked on doors and, and told them about it, plus sent some emails and to the department heads and elected officials. Everybody in the courthouse is invited to these safety, and these will, this, this week's, uh, or this month's training is gonna be of emergency operations inside the courthouse because they finalized the main draft of our emergency operations for the courthouse, and we'll be going over that, taking some ideas and suggestions to, uh, move forward on presenting that to you all for approval later on.
In reference to that, judges, bailiffs, secretaries that are in the state's entity will be a part of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. I, human resources, Director Bentley.
Um, last week, talked about the wellness committee, um, we're getting that off the ground, starting on Friday. We're gonna have a meeting upstairs in the multipurpose room, just discussing the schedule and kinda what, uh, the employees want. Um, they don't wanna offer something that's not wanted by everyone. So, we're gonna have just a short meeting, just kinda what, what we can do for them and what they want. Uh, we're gonna have a wellness survey come out next week, and I'll have some flyers go out about that. Um, really, how this wellness committee and how our program's gonna work really is based on the information we get on the survey. So, I really need, um, all the employees to answer it honestly, it's anonymous, um, it's meant to be anonymous. Um, as long as we get feedback from that, that's open and honest, we'll base all of our programs on that, and we should get the most participation out of it.
Will it be donuts?
No. Tell me water.
Any questions for H R?
No, not after that.
I T? Planning Commission, Director Curtis?
Not, uh, in regards to the planning commission, but, um, but just want to echo, uh, we are in a flood watch, as your flooding administrator, so take caution, if you know of places that are gonna be flooded, and if they do flood, please let me know, so I can keep a historical record of that. Additionally, to all agencies and the Board of County Commissioners, if you know of any, any home that would be flooded over the next couple of days, let me know, so that I can go out and assess the damage.
Depends on how high the look all that gets.
It's getting high.
When, Larry, when you ask for, uh, flooding, are you, are you also talking about, uh, road flooding?
Yes.
And, and how it crosses the road?
Anytime it affects any man-made structure, so that way we can keep historical evidence, that way when we go back through later and decide, not saying that any of you commissioners will be gone at that time, but if we go back through and rebuild that road, we have a historical data marker of how high the water had gotten.
Are you gonna kinda take the depth on it, or do you want us to kinda get an idea how far up it comes, or what do you want?
Uh, as our county is seven hundred and eleven square miles, and my office consists of three and a half, I would appreciate any kind of help the Board of County Commissioners can provide by measuring the water for us, and so that we may report it, but if you would like for me to personally come out and take the depth, I would be happy to.
You need pictures of it, what, what exactly do you want? We've, I've had water over the road last week twice.
I know there are times that, uh, cameras are not available, though in this day and technology, with our cell phones, we're able to take them, so, uh, records of photo is always best, so that way we can also do a comparison of the trees that are around there, cannot do the exact depth all the way down, we can do a lateral inspection of that, uh, but if you... we can do a lateral inspection of that, but if you can also take the depth, that would be great, too.
Your lawyer would advise you that please don't tread into water, that might be unsafe, just, just to get a measurement.
Please remember that. Please use caution. Please remember a foot of water. Yeah, a foot of water with a heavy truck, so please, please be cautious.
Judicial, anyone here from upstairs, OSU extension?
Nothing really news to report, other than we're about a month away from county fair, so, county fair bricks are available, they've been ready for a while.
Alright. Thank you. Sheriff's Office. And the Treasurer.
John. I know we're in private.
Sheriff?
Yeah. You've, you saw that Commissioner Becker had some things going on in the couch, or are we gonna?
We don't know what we're gonna have left yet, I mean, I've got four left, and we have to quickly get out. And then we'd like to keep anywhere from four to six spares for reserve and for down car use, so I don't know, and then if we give any to emergency management, I don't know what. That's why I'm trying to wait and see when we get these issues, get a good bill for it.
Okay, I think, I think we have all the way up until September the seventh to get it into the auction, and after that, they're gonna make.
Okay, do we have any acknowledgements? Treasurer. Item number twenty-two, public comments and responses from board members, are there any public comments?
I have some questions.
Ms. Wilson.
Okay, first of all, on the hourly change, the, I think it was one seventy-three, what is the cost savings to the county to change the payroll hourly calculations?
You wanna address that, you or Teresa?
It's a time-saving measure.
It's, it's basically not gonna be a cost savings, I guess it could be if someone were in a short month, they might pay someone more hourly wage than they would on a long month, but it's consistency, so that we treat that employee the same every month, instead of having a different hourly wage from month to month. So it's more of a consistency and a fairness.
So this is simply an administrative change?
Yes, we just wanted the board to set policy, so that we would have directive.
Does it all lower the cost of paying employees that are terminated or separated?
It could, and it could not, it just depends on how they've been figuring it in the month, the given month.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple other questions.
Okay.
What's the total cost of the EOC project? I believe you guys said it's gonna be wrapping up this week, so.
I'm sorry.
The EOC project, the Emergency Management renovations at the jail.
You wanna answer that one?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay, and on the appropriations, you, you all reviewed your temporary appropriations, have any of those been changed from the ones that were previously approved by the Excise Board to reflect the change of the one-eighth, if the vote tomorrow passes? The one-eighth cent that's gonna be dedicated to the material services judgment?
That's, that's your department, you wanna answer that one?
I don't believe anyone has changed anything, Teresa Havick? We're nowhere.
We just presented the amendment today for the insurance and benefit account, but nothing else has changed.
Has an accountment established for those monies yet?
For the insurance and benefits?
No, I'm sorry, for the one-eighth of a cent that's supposed to go to pay towards that judgment if the vote passes tomorrow?
No, we're gonna wait till the vote passes.
Okay. And, on the Wellness Committee, I was just curious if there was gonna be any expense to the county, if so, if it was budgeted for?
Jenny, who, who, shoot that. That's an actual question. Do you have any further questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Or questions? Okay. Thank you, and at this time, item number twenty-three, I have the first orders from all departments.
Lady, very good presentation.
Thank you.
Well, we just walk in to the courthouse. And we're sitting there, and a lot of those to sign.
Yeah, I'd be here when they sign those, just so I can grab one copy, because delay, I didn't get a copy till like that thing, so if I can just get it today, I can issue the permits today.
Okay.
So, I'll come back in a second, that's alright.
Yeah, I'm gonna have them sign, um, catchment, that's what needs from.
Sure.
Yeah. So we didn't know. And you didn't get them there, and I said, you, he's like, I know. He's like, yeah, I go, I just get it off, and it makes you know everybody was okay, so, that's what I did, and the next day they were shooting, but, you know, I mean, it's in the daylight, and it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Chilling, you got Jordan.
Hey, Robin, did they recess? They're gone?
Yeah, for sure, so.
Anyways, thanks, Rhonda.
Yeah, thank you. Made me actually feel there.
Yeah, because Jordan wasn't upset, was he?
No.
Okay. Alright.
Is your daughter still here?
No, she left, um, I know, I cried yesterday.
Yeah.
I did, I cried Saturday when, uh, 'cause they left early yesterday morning, so we went back over there Saturday, they had errands and stuff for people to see Saturday, and. So I called her, and I said, hey, I said, you know, gotta say goodbye. And she's like, okay, well, come on over, so we went on over to Nene and Pop's house, and, and, of course, I cried, you know, and I cried, and I mean, I cried and held her for like fifteen, twenty minutes when I first saw her, and cried and held her for fifteen, twenty minutes when I was, you know, she was leaving again. And I know it's not very far, but still, you know, I mean, two weeks of, two years of not seeing them, and, and then the grandbabies, and, you know. And she's like, Mom, she goes, it's amazing, because Reuben absolutely loves Anne.
Are they recessed?
I said, they're cousins. I mean, they're cousins, it's.
I don't think they recessed, so. Yeah, I think they just got it.
Mom, I wish you didn't have to look, I said, I know, honey, and she goes, I wish two of them was here, I said, I know, honey, she goes, 'cause we have more weeks like this.
Where are they moving to? Where are they moving to?
Uh, Kentucky, well, Indiana, actually.
Indiana, that's what Ken said.
Yeah, Kentucky will be where he goes to seminary, but they'll live in Indiana, which is about fifteen miles or fifteen minutes from, from seminary, so.
Right there across the line, yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
I don't know, I'm, I'm making plans to go. I, I don't understand, I don't know if we can do a chair.
Something, yeah.
'Cause they were just really walking over each other, and you know.
Is it raining out there yet?
There wasn't a recess, was there?
Not very recessed, there wasn't, but on my map here, it looks like it's gonna rain today, like, it looks like it might be.
What are they saying, over five inches in the next three days?
Five inches in three quarters. Grand Lake was over, they had the spillways open, all three spillways.
They were about to flood.
I know.
Good fishing, too.
Flooded downstream, too, Grand was.
I went whitewater rafting, so, oh, yeah, not Grand, no, I went West Virginia.
When? Last week?
No, no, a couple years ago.
That's fun, isn't it? I went Colorado once. Always fun. He hasn't signed any, has he, yet?
Actually, I just want the eight-year plan, and the eight-year plan. Didn't he get his own copy?
He took his own copy?
He took it?
Blake did.
No, didn't Kurt get his own copy and take?
What?
Oh, let me go, I'm gonna make us a copy.
It's front and back.
Yeah, it's two-sided.
Hey, make three of them, if you don't mind, make three of them, you got one? Oh, you know what, I did, I did get one that wasn't signed.
So then Kurt should have one.
Yeah, he did, no, too. John gave him all three of them.
Oh, these are in here, just like this, but they're unsigned.
Is that Kurt's?
No, but he can have it, 'cause I have one now.
No, it looks quite weird, doesn't it?
Are we getting ready to wet?
It appears that way on AccuWeather, yes.
That's what I hear.
You weren't out much? Should have had. There you are, just gonna write a text to you.
Where is that? That's my.
Karen, we should ask to sign these, Reuben.
I'll advise you not to go into that water. Turn around all over.
Upstairs?
Yes, ma'am. We can, we can do it two ways, I can take all those sheets back and copy them, or you can go buy this, like, Cobra. That'll work, or you're gonna be done now. And then I'll give you the source, like, on the highway. These are cool, that, 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 and they're turtle.
Okay, that works for me.
And this all, two slips, and it'd be the same thing, that'd be the same thing, treasure.
Works for me.
I got ready to get them, I'm like, you know, it's the same thing as on that portion of the sheet, it's just all together condensed.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, signing Kurt's orders, right?
Okay, that's where I got that. If it were your FEMA, I would use that.
Yeah, the hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, so this is not anything different than what we've already been doing?
We wanna be able to, and, and sit down, because, um, he don't need somebody, a couple forty hours, and when she's done, it come out, it just kept bothering me, because it's like, okay, well, this one can make fifteen dollars an hour, this one can make fourteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, no, it is.
It should be consistent, and we even really thought we could be able to send them a little out, so.
Just to make it normal.
Because, I, as I seen.
Yes, saw him, and I talked about it.
Trying to get the word out.
Yeah, and now during the time, people just, they, what they do is took them up and divided the number of workdays by eight hours, and that's what they tried to use.
And that never caught them, that that was inconsistent?
Guess not. It just, you know, but it is, and it needs to be taken care of, so, this way we have some.
Hand painted?
Okay.
Want to see the yes or no?
Like, my question.
Did you have anything for me to take?
Who that company was, and talk about who you got.
No, you got nothing.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, you got nothing.
Do you need anything?
No, I'm good, thank you. At least peel. Are you cold? It is. It is a little, it is a little chilly, it was, it wasn't bad when all the people were here, you know, the, the.
Oh, your phone.
You want him?
Cash as well, that means, maybe it's too bad.
Bye, Silas. Hey, bye, I'll see you later.
See you later.
Honey, I still need to come see your dog.
Yeah. He comes like a man.
Thanks.
What's the dog's name?
Gracie.
Gracie, yeah, Gracie.
Sweet. Did you wanna see another picture of her before I go, Commissioner?
No, I don't.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You wanna see Gracie?
Pam, Pam Blackburn lost her.
You got a dog?
No, I know, Coco, yeah.
I've got one straight, she have a box, somewhere to take. His name's Chewbacca. Why's that spin?
You didn't wanna just say one, did you?
No, no, I'll say all. That's what my mom says about me. What do she mean by that?
I was telling Gracie some of your jokes.
I don't tell jokes.
Not lately.
Well, you've seen the picture, show him the picture.
She had her eyes up.
When you tell her my jokes.
I said, I was telling Gracie some of your jokes, you showed her that picture.
What can we do for you?
Wow. Ask a question, another one of our extension offices asked about the remaining filing documents that are in our office, and if those are available, but I know that we're not allowed to enter the courthouse without permission, and he's fine with it if you say no, but just a chance to pass the law.
I don't care, I mean, what, who is?
It's Stan Simple from Hawn County.
Do you have to, do you have to do that, or is it?
They're not, they're not on inventory anymore, 'cause those filing documents are also.
Yeah, you can get with Ryan.
Okay, just get with Ryan.
And, when do you want him out?
He, he was going to make a trip this way on Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, get with Ryan, and he can open up the doors, and, and just form, you have to sign. Chris Templehagen.
Okay. I will get with Ryan, see you first.
Anything for OSU extension?
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, just keep that phrase in mind.
Hey, I need to get some sample bags from you.
Forage or soil?
Soil.
Soil, how many do you want?
Um, four.
Four, okay.
How big of an area they're supposed to test, I mean?
It, it depends, typically, I, typically, I tell people that if you're going to manage it the same, and it basically produces uniformly, then I would just do one sample over that acreage. Now, if you've got like a forty-acre pasture, and like one end of it is really, really poor, then sample that sex, sample that.
It's a lady that arms up there, and she says, and I said, I'll get you the sample bags, and, and all you would take the sample in for you, all you have to do is fill up the form and send them out.
Yeah, it's, um, pretty easy.
We need energy care.
It's just a thing, it's like that, there's, I tell people that if there's a part that's doing really poorly, then sample that. Um, maybe different than you might, there may be some nutrient things going on in that area, otherwise treated the same.
Hey, no, on, I mean, you guys are heavily involved in horses.
Um, I'm, I'm afraid where this is going.
Where's it going?
I, I.
You don't know, you're just scared.
I'm scared, yeah.
Okay, but you're heavily involved in horses, I mean, and everybody, look, who does love horses?
Two, two lives.
When the sheriff's office goes out to do a welfare check on a horse, and it turns out that the owner is indigent, or the horse is indigent, I don't know which one, couldn't, couldn't OSU Extension come in and maybe? Maybe help with some of those expenses?
No, no expenses, I can provide you information on how to compost them. You got a woodpile, can take care of it.
I understand, and, and that's very much appreciated, however, the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office is not equipped to, to be, you know, animal police and.
I understand.
And the Board of County Commissioners, I'm, I'm not sure.
You know, people donate millions of dollars to that Humane Society, call them. I mean, most of it's administrative, but.
Yeah, I know, so you're telling me that.
We have fact sheet on how to compost animal carcasses, and can advise you on how to get rid of them, we actually do, there's a, a den animal feed truck that had a.
Yeah, the used cow dealer.
You know they still are.
The used cow dealer.
Uh, well.
That's where it used to seal the door, your local used cow dealer.
It's lighter, longhorn carcass removal.
Oh, I've, no, he's out.
No, they just, they just pulled a horse off for me two months.
Oh, is it bad? Does it have a little issue with?
Is that cat too?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah, I had a horse die of heart failure.
I haven't lost any, so. One of them's lost you.
Yeah.
She found me.
So, but.
Yeah, you know, I actually did that one time, I took wood chips and just buried it. I had Mary die of colic.
Yes.
And I buried her as wood chips, and I mean, it was.
It's gonna be a long story.
No.
Was it old man, was it same old Mary that did that time?
No, this is different, I've had it, you gotta share that, there's some lots of horses, we got a lot of horses. Hey, I'm done, I'm waiting for them, sorry.
The composting deal actually works really well, because within a year, you won't have anything left.
Nothing.
Within six months, you can take bones and just snap them.
I'll be doing.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it, it worked well.
And the whole reason why we've had a big push on that is because you're taking those nutrients back into the soil. But you've gotta have a pretty decent woodpile to do it.
Yeah, it was, I used wood chips.
Yeah.
And.
Wood chips be good for wood.
I covered it about, I covered three feet.
You know, that might be something we need to push through the county, is, you know, we'll bring you wood chips if you compost your own animals. 'Cause we have a lot of wood chips.
We're doing a study right now, uh, about the, uh, sodium barbitol that they use to euthanize, and how it remains in the ground.
Does it, like, the spores just go down?
Well, no, that chemical itself stays.
Really?
It does not break down.
It's not required to go through DEQ?
There's regulation if you're so many feet from a waterway, but, or so many feet from septic or in-town and those kind of things, but, you know, if you've got eighty acres, you can, there's nothing to say you can't bury your horse in the back eighty.
On the back eighty?
Yeah. All right, I will get with Ryan then.
Thank you. So, we're not paying for the, they're not paying for the horse, Larry?
Sorry. Is it, is Larry, is it you that has the horse, or?
Oh, I don't know. He doesn't, he doesn't know, talk.
Yeah, I'm like, what?
That's why he said, hmm.
Yeah, no, we, we don't have funds for that. We, we provide information.
Start sliding down these chairs sometimes, don't we?
Yeah, and you sit up on the edge.
What time is the Excise Board meeting today?
Morning.
Morning, yeah, morning. What do you think of the new chairs?
They're comfortable.
They're more comfortable, aren't they?
Yes, they are. I wish the city had some like this.
Is there a meeting tonight?
They're having a special meeting tonight, yeah.
What they're meeting about?
Um, trying to think of what it is.
Oh, first Monday or second Monday?
No, they called a special meeting, I think it's to review a proposal or something, I can't remember which product they were looking at, but.
Oh, that's O C I, isn't it?
No, I don't think so, I think I understood what it was, but I'll call you.
Could be. Still ways away from. Are you told this?
They're ready?
Yeah.
It's yours, it's yours to.
No, we don't wanna break into the flow, because then we mess up Sonja, and then we mess up Sonja.
There's no.
You're so polite.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a flow now.
You're so.
The French ready for us?
Things ready to go.
Dine soon.
Dine soon. You know, when I asked about donuts, I was thinking wheat flour donuts, you know, for the healthy.
Well, of course.
What's the utility permits the last two weeks?
Ten last weeks, seven until seventeen.
Yeah. She was such a super lady.
What's the shame about Mary, um, Lawson?
Lawson. Just like there was a purse sort of there for the French shop, just made me think of her.
Wow.
She, she was a super, super lady.
She passed away.
Last, uh, Friday. Yep, not in Methodist Church.
Nice lady.
Long shot. She have no kids?
I don't have, I know she's got at least one son, 'cause he works at a French shop.
She's got three sons and a daughter.
See, I didn't know the rest of them.
Four sons and a daughter, I can't. Five altogether.
I like to hear that. She always seems so energetic.
Yeah, she was a, she was a pistol.
Freezing, Silas?
I'm freezing.
Yeah, let it sit cold when all the people were here, but, you know, all, all the, it's a lot of heat, but.
How's the chairman of the nine-one-one trust according, is that you? Jane Morrison. I'm going, this is, this is what he told, this is what he sent to you.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepted beneficial interest.
He said to you, yeah, he said, this is the employment, okay, this, he said to post on this, this is our, the employment agreement.
Did you go ask Ryan to kick temperature up a little? I figured that's where you managed to find Ryan.
I went to get a little bit warmer, though.
Is it warmer outside, or is it down there?
Yes, it is warmer in the hallway. So, when is the rain supposed to come in?
Anytime, it looked like it was about here when I came this morning, so, um, it's moving across, it looks like we're gonna, they're saying, I don't know what, I've heard different, like, five to seven inches over the next three days.
Yeah.
I hope it doesn't affect voters, I hope that they, you know, choose to get out.
Yeah, that's amazing, we go from drought to flood.
I can't believe in August, the amount of rain we're getting, it's, in fact, it's so wet, we're trying to brush off our ditches, but it's so wet, we can't get off the road, yeah, it's, it's on us right now.
There it is. Aren't you the better about theirs? Thanks, Judy.
We getting rain on now?
Brian, I can't tell.
I've got cemeteries that we can't even get to, and they're growing up, and the people are gonna be upset.
We know like those colors.
Well, you can mow them and rut them, and people are gonna be upset.
About just getting a bunch of billy goats.
Hey, did you see where they did that, someplace in, it was on, in Washington?
D C, D C or state?
D C.
Really?
It was one of the parks, I think, put them there, children vegetation.
Well, they can do it.
Washington, D C.
Have you guys heard anything about the audit, is it, is it finished?
About the what?
The audit.
I haven't talked to them.
I talked to them a while back, I saw her out here in the hall, and she said, there's still gonna be a while, that's what she told me, so. I guess they do two years at a time. So, that's where they're at.
I thought they were supposed to do it every year, because of that, the state law?
I don't know, I'd have to check, but weren't, they've been behind there, remember? I know they were behind when they had that change over, that's why last year they did, how many years?
Yeah, I know they were behind.
Yeah, maybe they're just getting caught up, and then they'll do it every year, I don't know. I can check, though.
Your signs up here with this meeting, no, that's, that's a central.
Yeah, it's a central. Did you find a red stamp, Manny?
Find the one?
Red stamp, they were picking one out, that's two months.
Trying to decide who.
Am I cramping your space, Kurt?
No, no.
You said, straighten up during this.
Well, Carol, I said, I meant, I meant it was, we had all those beds, I didn't wanna get them all mixed up, trying to make it easier for Nelson. Because if I just went here and grabbed them, and then they'd have been mixed, I mean, I know you're sort of.
There's a lot of stuff to sign today.
If I could save it, it's not working. What was the red stamp on?
Um, something for the sheriff's office, they thought the trust is the one you should pay, the trust, sheriff would pay, so sheriff paid.
New pile?
New pile.
Is this new way working better for your office down there?
It is.
I mean, it makes sense, 'cause, used to, they were in order when I started, but somewhere over here, it got mixed up.
The factory work started paltering.
Well, I mean, you always have to work, that's a good, by the time we got the mic, they were totally hungover. So, you are, you must be in. Is it, is that key safe?
They are, they're good, yeah.
Here comes Glenda.
Is it possible, Ms. Wilkin, that somewhere in your, in your articles, you could mention about handicap parking? You know, since, since that's not completed out there, that if, if they have any needs, if they can come in, and we can move, we'll move the barricades and.
Oh, sure.
And let them in, 'cause I know that's a concern for some of the citizens.
Sure, we can do that, who do they need to call?
Huh?
Who do they need to call?
Uh, the commissioner's office, but I'm gonna have Ryan put up some temporary, want to put up some temporary signs that show handicap parking where they, where they know that.
Okay.
That they can get in, but, uh.
I can probably just do a story on that, if you like, that, so that you're, me and their, you know, ADA complaint, or whatever it's called.
Yeah, we're trying, I mean, we're trying to get them in, and of course, the ones, like the, the lady that comes over, you know, that's always here, she asks, hey, and she said, well, I can't walk over there, I said, well, we'll open it up for you. And so, I guess she's parking up, up front now, so she can just get on the ramp and come up, but, you know, if I'm not aware of it, I can't do anything about it, but I had that a couple of different ones had asked, you know, how can I get in there?
We had a couple come in last week, and they were having, they set it just for them out, just to walk over here, and so, we asked the sheriff's department, they. And so we asked the sheriff's department, they pulled up here and took them back over to the parking lot. And I wanted to ask you about, uh, smoking, non-smoking, no smoking signs out there, because since my window's right there, close to the front door, I see people smoking all the way up to the front door, and then they throw it down.
Yeah, we, we like to put them back in. It's just kind of in chaos.
Yeah.
Organized chaos until we get another thing pulled out.
Right.
You mean the old courthouse?
Yes, sir.
You don't have to make it lose its name, its identity yet.
That old thing? Is that all of them?
Are we ready for a new batch?
I'm ready.
No, we're hungry, so when you say batch, it sounds like cookies, so.
New batch cookies?
New batch. Is that the last load, Sonia?
It's not very.
There's a lot. We look.
And there's just about that many utility permits still to go.
Blacky was the man today. I assume he's talking about Zomi. Since this was on the agenda, Dan, I'll ask you about this. How long do we think it'll be until, uh, you and I are stated about us that we're buddies with the applicant? Since you voted yes. I'd say it's already started.
Buddies with the applicant?
Well, he voted for his own.
I've never met that man before.
Well, I mean, he's constituent, obviously.
You're talking about Mr. McEnroe?
McEnroe.
Never seen the guy before that I know of. Where's he live? Does he, he live right down there?
He lives right across the street of where his restaurant.
Oh, does he?
Right across the street.
That's another county for me.
Yeah, that's a tough one too, because you have, you have people from neighboring counties that it affects, but the planning commissioner said all of their maps were not up to date, like ours are. So Lisa, I wasn't kidding when I told that woman the word was out. They called me yesterday.
Oh, really?
Oh. All day long.
Well, people do seem, seem to be very sensitive about anything that involves alcohol, so.
And I understand that, you know.
Like I said, I don't
By the looks of what all I saw though, there was nothing on there where it was gonna be just an sleazy bar. It was gonna be a, it's gonna be a restaurant.
Don't you a story? Do you see the plans of that place?
No.
I mean, it looks like a beautiful building. I mean, it's probably, if I was guessing, I'm gonna say it, it probably will cost him a half a million dollars just to build a building.
It was tough, it was tough voting that way on the alcohol part. It really was for me. But it's the overall, what the overall of the building is gonna, I mean, what it's gonna really be, I think once it's done, people out there aren't gonna be that upset. I think they're gonna be.
What type of restaurant, what type of restaurant is it?
Well, it's independent of, I mean, it's not like, you know, it's not like it's Chili's or Applebee's or something like that. It's just an independent.
It's like a steakhouse or like a home cooking or?
I don't know. I don't know. He didn't say.
And, and you know, there's a lot of people that are gonna eat there that aren't gonna drink. It's not just you have to go in there and drink. You know, I eat in a lot of restaurants, and I don't drink.
Well, you can't even go into a restaurant. Really? I mean, Chili's has a bar. TGI, Friday's, they have a bar, every, every.
Olive Garden, Ray Lobster?
Huh?
Olive Garden, Ray Lobster?
Yeah, they have bars. That's why Zomi gets so much fun.
No, it's not.
Because no matter what you do, you didn't make the right decision. I mean, you cannot come out on those deals.
The mothers against the driver. I agree. I agree. But that's not gonna stop people from drinking. They're gonna still drink if they wanna drink.
I wonder if they had considered going to the school district to talk them about moving the bus stop, if that would make it better for them.
The, you mean the people that were against it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's all over your district as well.
It's all in my district. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
You are a plethora of assistance.
We're getting closer, aren't we?
Yes.
We're closer than we started, yes. So they don't expect you there till one thirty, so. It'll be fun.
It's really a good idea. Man, look at it. That's a godly washer right there.
Are you worried about flooding?
I'll tell you what, as saturated as the ground is right now, it doesn't take two inches of rain. I've got roads underwater right now.
Larry, thanks for the extra work.
You're welcome. Ten feet about. Twelve now?
It's ten.
Larry, if you'd like to do something about the flooding, I mean, I would definitely be interested to write it.
We can talk about, I mean, right now, or?
Whenever.
Um, let me get some data together. That way I can provide you with some information, make this one happen well.
Okay. We can get a couple to do, or maybe I could write it sometime tomorrow, so anybody wants to. Sounds good. Thank you.
I'm there. Ottawa County?
I knew they were getting a lot of rain.
Northeast. No, northeast Oklahoma.
Hey Danny, you said you, Danny, you said it had a couple of roads that were already having water?
I've had them under last week a couple of times.
But there's not gonna be any impact on the voting tomorrow, is there?
No, well, it depends on how much rain we get.
Imagine if it was closing down.
You know, we get four, three, five inches, there's gonna be roads underwater.
If those roads were in lights in the district, you'd have fixed them.
I've got, just out of Chelsea there, I've got one road that, if Prior Creek, if it, if Prior Creek floods, that, well, that road's underwater.
You know, Maytag came along with the new adventure, uh, new, new piece of equipment, but I think you were there before Maytag.
Who, what?
That agitator.
Watching machine.
Agitator. I think you're right.
Just have a little fun with it.
But I've got a low water between us and, and Maze County, a low water bridge that they maintain, but it, it'll flood every time it gets underwater. Or any, anytime we get a lot of water.
Boy, would be interesting.
And then I've got one between me and Craig County, a low water bridge that goes underwater.
There's got the southern end of the county that goes underwater. Well, it used to.
Has King Road having any problems along King Road?
Where did King?
With Flin.
Flin. Flin. Same road, but it's King one way, Flin the.
You made, you made today on it.
Yeah, Flin, Flin goes underwater.
That would be one that really needs to be reworked, because it has historical, I, I might go actually go out the second.
Almost all of our roads that go underwater have historical flooding, because, I mean, we put up signs on all of our normal places that flood. You know, problem of flooding, yeah, you guys probably do too, so.
Letdown signs. Letdown signs?
No, letdown signs, we, we go let those down, you know, do not drive into high water, but, uh, we leave the ones up that say problem of flooding year round, just because, you know, it reminds people if they're real.
Are you talking about the section past Catalina, past South Haven to the dead end of King Road?
So on Flin Road.
Oh, Flin Road, okay, that's, I know which one.
Once, or east.
East of Muskogee. Yeah, I mean, there at eighty-eight.
Yeah, that, I, I, I drive that every once in a while, during, and I haven't seen it to her at the tube bag yet, but it might be this time around, just because of, again, the saturation we've had.
Has King Road ever flooded?
Going west?
Yes.
From the school?
From the school?
No.
I'm saying, not since I've been in office, and it would have flooded in.
Well, further down, further down towards the.
Right down there, but where you live though, right there at the corner, it floods, doesn't it? That's not King, that's.
Um, South Haven does. Yeah, going north. It does flood. It floods it several times.
By those people, I don't know, have a little barn out there.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you know what? Well, it's really never flooded, but there's a little creek that comes through there. Boy, it gets pretty high. But then going north, washed out the road, like last, not this spring, but a year ago in the spring. Did you know about that one?
I wouldn't hear that, so no.
We're in here, then, it's okay.
That's the reason why we're, you know, citizens complain about the regulations with, with flood prevention, but we help a lot more to prevent that.
Well, yeah, but when it floods, at least in my area, it's always my fault.
Of course.
Because we didn't clean the water, we didn't do this or do that. It has nothing to do
I agree with them.
The fact that, yeah, you agree with them.
Hey Kurt, I'm concerned about the front entry. There's been a lot of people with their umbrellas that's getting wet.
That's a
Do you know?
It's got a, the floor is, uh.
It's not slippery?
No, it's got that.
Up the entryway.
Yeah, the entryways, it's, it's got a little head.
That stores water in there.
Yeah, it takes the water down and.
Okay. Well, I was just making sure, because I kept seeing all the water dropping off their umbrellas.
Still raining hard.
Oh, Larry.
Are you ready?
Nope.
Well, we'll try and scoop these in, because I have.
The clerk's over here trying to push more.
One more bean.
And then have these little. Yes, yeah.
I'm trying, Larry. I may have to eat lunch in here. There, there's a Mr. Mullin. He's already going upstairs.
For the exercise more beans?
Yes.
Exercise more.
Yeah, Ryan's got cones out there too, I just saw, in the entryway. Are you related to the lady that was, um, over here, Cheryl?
She's my second cousin.
That's what I thought. Easy, easy.
The engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Thousand dollars worth of shirts.
Who's that?
I looked at it, saw it, said it bore green. Hello, Buck. How you doing?
Buck?
Hello.
Raining out there.
Is it raining hard?
Well, it hasn't been. It's kinda light up a little bit now.
Did you melt?
Hi?
Did you melt?
Just about.
Just about.
Just about.
Can you still early vote today?
Till five.
Till five, okay.
Six.
Was it six?
Six?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was five.
How's things down in our part of the world?
It hasn't started raining. It didn't drizzle a little bit. We didn't have any rain yet when I left, but I think it's moving that way.
We looked at the radar a while ago. It was it was looking, uh.
It really come down from here down.
Oh, Mikey. Larry, what you got rolling this afternoon?
Emails, communications, permits.
Is it your turn by my watch?
No, it's your turn.
Oh, I'm busy this afternoon.
Are you really?
No. You don't go? No, you don't go. Are you sure it's my turn?
I have the receipt from last time.
He has the receipt from last time.
He says he had the receipt.
Yeah. Is that the last one?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right.
No, we're still gotta sign the utility.
So, yes, that's what I'm here for. They sent.
I flipped all of that, every copy.
That, that's fine. There should be four of each, except for the Chelsea permit.
Okay, so that one may have more underneath it.
No, I think this is, I think this, yeah. You're good.
Yep. On wallpaper clips.
Okay.
The lawn on Inte, are they gonna go ahead and?
They're gonna do the Astro account, and they're setting that up this week.
Okay.
I had to talk to the east, uh eastern Oklahoma director about it, and he's getting, uh, their.
Who is that?
Carl. Can't remember his last name.
Okay.
Nice guy. Then he's been working with us.
On forty-one sixty road.
Forty-one sixty?
Yes, it's just east of the Verdigris River, south of Old Thirty-three.
Okay.
Uh, someone has came in there and looks like they punched something under the road. Now, the road is like this.
How'd you go that far?
Can you go back, yeah, it, it, and if there's no permit, would you put that on the agenda? To have them compensate the county for their damages?
If there's not a permit, how do we find out? Is there a marker?
Well, if there's no permit, then I can just dig it up and, and see what it is, couldn't I? However, I'm not going to, because it's a natural gas line.
That would be bad.
Is it that?
Down in my area, down, uh, just east of the Verdigris River.
That'll be ONG. The thing, I mean, Chelsea gas, that's not, Chelsea doesn't go that far south.
No, it'll be, it'll be, well, no, it's a pipeline company.
Right, but it would've been for.
There's a huge, uh, tunnel or whatever, you have all the valves and.
Well, I mean, if it's not ONG, then it's, then no, they cannot pull the permit.
I know they have to pull the permit.
Oh.
I want them to compensate the county for their damage.
You wanna hold it? You wanna touch it?
No, I'm really, really.
He's possessive about his utility permits.
I'll bring it down to you.
Hey, how was the conference I had heard? How was your conference?
It was awesome. I took every, uh, every road worker down there to listen to Brian's story.
It's, Brian isn't the same guy that did, at the arms or anything?
No, no, this was a guy who works in the paper industry, paper mill, and his son went to work for a friend of his in construction. And he didn't follow the safety rules, and his son died tragically at, I believe, twenty or twenty-one years old.
Getting ready, twenty, getting ready to turn twenty-one.
Yeah, getting ready to turn twenty-one years old, and uh, the guy that, that he called his friend and said, you put my son up with a job and has a job. Well, then that guy had to call his best friend and tell him that his son had been killed in a tragic accident. And so now this guy goes all over the nation, uh, doing seminars, and he still works in the paper mill. But he was actually their safety director for the paper mill, and then they didn't take it serious, did they? They didn't take him serious as a safety director. And then his own son was killed, I mean, not in that mill, of course, but. They almost like cured up a little.
Yeah. That's terrible.
Hey, it was, it was, it was touching. That's what I tell my guys all the time, I say, you know, I feel like it would be my job to tell your family, and I say, you better not make me do my job. Larry, how did you like the presentation with the overhead projector?
I think it provides the board of county commissioners and the citizens of Rockville County a better understanding of zoning change and application.
I know everyone was, that out there were. Six said it on that screen, but it's.
A lot of citizens extrapolate on their, when they're listening to a conversation, it's much better if they have a good reference.
You know, I had a lady call me yesterday, one of the many, and told me that if someone dies because of an alcohol-related accident, that it's on my conscience. And I thought, well, that's actually not true. It'd be just like if I sold a gun to someone, and they went and used it for something ill, I didn't pull the trigger.
Right.
Not the moral conscience of the county. But I still don't like zoning issues.
I hope to tell you.
Okay, these are all the same.
Are they?
And these are, mine?
Those are yours. This is, it's town Ulliko.
We can conclude the meeting.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Would it rain down nine o'clock if the town won't flood, will it? Not anymore.
No. Got that taken care of.
You're building another one out for the west end of town, there in that Summerland Industrial Park.
Oh, yeah.
Where, where, I mean, it won't, it won't.
He amazes me, I tell you. Somewhere around Rick Brown Village.
Yeah, behind, behind. No, not the world, just my district. Hey, you don't need to say anything, because it's your district, you fix it.
That's right, it already fixed.
No problem.
You on?
All right, here we go. I don't think it's, do we have a motion to pay purchase orders from all parts? Second?
Who hit the second?
Thacker. Thacker?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye.
Hound?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Lozier? Hound?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Meeting adjourned at twelve thirty-six E M.
The vote won't be good during lunch hour. The vote won't be good during lunch hour.